Okay, I'll call the meeting to order at 7:02. Can we have a roll call, please?
Dustin Allred.
Here.
Will Andreessen.
Here.
Andrew Fell. Lou Hopkins. Debra McFarland. Bill Rose. Karen Sims. Chen Chi Yu.
Here.
Okay, so we have a quorum. Changes to the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are none.
Okay, approval of the minutes. Approval of the minutes from the June 6th regular meeting of the Plan Commission. Are there any motions or comments on the meetings? From our, on the minutes from our last meeting?
I will be approve of the minutes from June 6th.
We have a motion by Mr. Hopkins. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Andreessen. Any discussion in the minutes? Any changes? If not, we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Alright, that passes. Communications. Do we have any communications?
We do not.
Continued public hearings, we have none. Old business, we have none. Which brings us to our new public hearing. For this evening. Which is Plan Case Number 2485-T24. A request by the Urbana Zoning Administrator to amend Articles 4, 5, 6, and 8 of the Urbana Zoning Ordinance to rename the B-3U General Business University Zoning District as the Campus Mixed Use Zoning District and update development and parking regulations in the district. We have a presentation.
We do.
Alright.
This evening.
I'll turn it over to you.
I have to say, I'm very excited to present this case to you tonight. I think when I started here over 10 years ago is on our big board of, these things would be nice to do someday, so I guess someday is today. So, without further ado. This is a request by me, the zoning administrator, for a text amendment to replace the B-3U General Business Zoning District with CMU Campus Mixed Use Zoning District and to require parking only for larger residential projects and to reduce the amount required for those, to add bicycle parking requirements, to remove floor area and open space requirements, to set a maximum building height, to set minimum and maximum front yards, to remove side and rear yard requirements, to add building landscaping and parking design requirements, to add screening requirements, and to change the uses allowed in the district. So, in short, this amendment would remake this B-3U zoning district with the intent of creating a new pedestrian-friendly, high-density district that better aligns with the comprehensive plan and with the reasoning behind the initial creation of the B-3U district, which was a direct outgrowth from the 1990 downtown-to-campus plan. So, the B-3U district was created in 1990. Here's a zoning map showing where that is with a particular area highlighted. So, it was created in 1990, intended to provide a range of business and office uses close to the University of Illinois and to provide high-density residential uses to ensure an adequate supply of housing for people who want to live near the U of I campus. As you'll see here, north is to the left. I didn't do that to trick you, it just fits better on the screen. So, Lincoln Avenue is there, that northernmost right-to-left street. So, you'll see it's exclusively on the west side of Lincoln Avenue, so adjacent to the U of I campus. And, to date, development and redevelopment has been slow and it has not really reflected the intent of the district. Meanwhile, in similar areas that are really close to campus over in Champaign, development has been pretty robust. So, the district has not performed as intended for close to 35 years, and there are two main reasons for this. First is that the district was created in part to promote office uses related to the university in close proximity to campus, and that ship essentially sailed when the university developed their research park over in Champaign. The second is that the district was created to promote high-density housing close to campus, but it, but the development regulations in the district don't really match that intent, especially the parking requirements, but some other things like floor area and open space ratios as well. So, those kind of undermine the intent of the district. So, the result is that the, most of the high-density campus-oriented housing and businesses have largely been satisfied by redevelopment on sites in Champaign. So, that's a, it's a significant lost opportunity for Urbana to build its residential tax base and its, and also to provide the neighborhood-serving uses that accompany those residential uses, which again, have been developed over in Champaign. So, Urbana's residents really have lost twice in this scenario. So, changes should be made to the B-3U district now. We don't want to delay them until the rewrite of the zoning ordinance, which could happen years from now, after we adopt the comprehensive plan and then, and then take on that zoning ordinance rewrite. So, we should do it now. There are large, if you just look at an aerial, there are some large vacant lots that are ripe for redevelopment. There are also some smaller lots that could be redeveloped as well. So, this text amendment really is in both the short and long-term best interests of the city. So, our approach to this text amendment is really twofold. So, first is to update or rename the district and then update the intent statement in the zoning ordinance to match the intent laid out in the comprehensive plan. And then, the, the second step is to replace our development regulations with regulations that match the new intent of the district. Also, a secondary thing we wanted to do is make the development regulations easier to understand, so that future development is more predictable. Okay, so, first off, so the comprehensive plan calls this area campus mixed use, and I've kind of highlighted some of the, some of the key things that we're going to take out of there. So, comprehensive plan calls for urban-style private development, a mix of uses including commercial, office, and residential, strong urban design that emphasizes a pedestrian-scale with buildings close to the street, wide sidewalks, and parking under and behind structures. So, what we're proposing is to rename the B-3U district as campus mixed use and then to really echo those pieces that are already laid out in the comprehensive plan with a couple of nuanced differences. So, the statement, or the new statement, I'll read it aloud. I don't like reading slides typically, but this is important. So, "The campus mixed-use district is intended to provide opportunities to redevelop areas close to the University of Illinois campus at high densities with a mix of commercial, office, and residential uses. Development should be designed to be pedestrian-scale with buildings close to the street, wide sidewalks, landscaped areas, few driveways, on-street parking, and parking behind structures." So, I'm going to sort of walk through each of these in turn and explain how the, or what, what the text amendment will do to sort of address each of these. So, with respect to high densities, they'd be addressed in the proposed amendment by simplifying development regulations, by removing floor area and open space ratios, by setting a cap on building height, by removing or reducing minimum parking requirements. And so, all these changes, when taken together, will, would lead to a more predictable, higher-density type of development in the district. Second piece, so there's already a good mix of commercial, office, and residential uses that are allowed in the district, but we would, we're proposing to get rid of a few things that are sort of auto-oriented, things like shopping centers, which require at least an acre to develop. That just isn't appropriate for the type of district we're going for here, so we'd remove some of those. And then, in addition, we're proposing that the first floor of every building have a 12-foot ceiling height, which would make, sort of make every first floor more likely to be usable or reusable for a mix of different uses. It also adds to making the area more pedestrian-friendly, but I can get into that later if we'd like to. Okay, the next piece is being pedestrian-scale, which is kind of addressed by the next few things as well. But, it would also do some things that are considered sort of best practices for pedestrian-scale or walkable districts. So, one is to require main entrances that face the street and have a walking path or connection to the sidewalk. One is requiring a certain amount of windows and doors or transparent glass, as it's called, on walls that face the street, so getting rid of blank walls that face the street, and requiring mechanical equipment and trash enclosures outside of front yards and screened from public view. And, the same goes for parking. We have some proposals in there to keep the parking away from public view. For buildings close to the street, we're proposing something simple, and that is not only having a minimum front yard, which is what we currently have, but setting a maximum front yard. So, instead of saying you have to build, you know, 15 feet or 10 feet or whatever and then back behind there, we're saying you have to build back there, but then you also have to build up to here, so that the building's close to the street. That would be a first for Urbana, but it would be effective. Okay, wide sidewalks is not something that can be addressed really in the zoning ordinance, because that's, zoning ordinance only deals with things on, on properties and not in the public right-of-way. We could address that through our land development code or through more specific streetscape plans or, or other types of plans for the district. But, we're leaving it in the intent statement, just so that, that doesn't get lost in the future. For landscaped areas, we would require that front yards be landscaped, but we don't want to be overly prescriptive with what we're proposing, so we weren't in the text amendment. Then finally, few, I'm sorry, few driveways and on-street parking. Both of these are, are addressed pretty well by requiring parking for every, for every development to be off of alleys. The district has pretty much all of its alleys intact, so we're proposing a requirement that would say, if you have an alley, you have to access your property and parking off of the alley. So, that would do two things. It would, it would lead to fewer new driveways, but it would also eliminate older driveways as, as parcels get redeveloped, which is safer for folks walking by, just makes for a better pedestrian environment, and since the alleys are there, it, it just kind of makes sense. And then finally, parking behind structures. So, when I go through, you'll see examples of, of all these things when I go through images in a little bit, but, so parking behind structures, we would require parking off of alleys, again. We would state that parking is not allowed in front yards and must be behind the principal face of a building, and then we'd state that parking areas shall not be visible from the street. So, I'll get into that here in a, in a minute. But, so as I stated earlier, the changes would better align the district with the comprehensive plan. It'd also meet several goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. I'm not going to go into those right now or in detail, but those are on page, pages eight and nine of the staff memo. I, I wanted to point out, we held two public meetings to discuss the proposed changes. One was targeted to property owners. There were five people that attended that meeting at the Phillips Recreation Center back in May. And then, two people came to the next meeting that was targeted towards just the, the general public, but property owners were also invited to that. So, we had seven people in total that came to those meetings, and in general, they were supportive of the changes that, that we were proposing. We also put out a basic owner survey, which is in Exhibit D of the staff memo, and seven owners filled that out. I do just want to kind of walk through some of the exhibits to sort of give a little bit more background about the district. So, you know, I stated that the district is underperforming with respect to uses, so recall the intent is businesses, offices, and high-density residential. This is a land use map. Yellow is residential. Those two purple buildings in the middle are churches. Those two churches are the only two non-residential buildings in the district. There are zero office, offices, zero businesses in the whole district. So, it's essentially just residential and with a couple of churches. This next piece, so it's kind of, it, this is, this is a fun map to look at in, in great detail, if you have some time. But, this shows the year that, that buildings were built. So, the yellow stuff on here was built before 1990, so before this district came, came about. The sort of light blue or cyan color was between 1990 and 2000. The green is between 2000 and 2010. And then, the, the purplish-pink one was between 2010 and present. You'll note there's only been three buildings that have been built in that time period. And then, you notice there's some sort of common characteristics, I'd say, of, of a lot of the buildings that were built after our current regulations went into place. So, from the aerial, you can just kind of see a lot of these sort of donut-shaped buildings that, you know, that, that were built after that time. And that's kind of a, a direct outgrowth of the development regulations. And we can get into that during discussion if you'd like, but I just wanted to share that. So, me and Marcus and one of, and our other planner, Nick Olson, went for a walk last August and took a bunch of pictures in the neighborhood. I'm not going to show you all the pictures, because I would get boring, but, so we walked most of the neighborhood. We missed kind of one block, but these numbers on here correspond to the images that, that I'm going to go through. But, I'm just trying to give you sort of a general idea. If you haven't walked the district for a while, just a general idea of some of the, some of the key sort of built components of the district. So, the first one is parking. There's service parking. There's a lot of parking off of alleys already, but there's a lot of parking underneath buildings that, if you look at this number 23 on the upper right, this is looking from the alley and it's looking towards Springfield Avenue, and you kind of see, you see through the building, through the parking lot. So, you know, it's the building above the parking, and then that parking on the other side is sort of adjacent to the, the folks walking by. You see that a lot, a lot in the district and a lot in more than just these images that I'm going to show you. But again, service parking, parking underneath buildings. One reason that there's parking underneath buildings is that our current regulations give you a bonus to your floor area ratio. You can essentially add an extra floor onto your building if you put all of your parking underneath the building. But, it doesn't, as you can see from these images, when we look from the sidewalk side especially, it doesn't actually hide the parking. It just, it, it's just parking under the building. Is the best way I can state it. So, yeah, again, so the upper left, number 50, is, is parking at the Hendrick House, which was developed in, was developed in two phases, in the 60s and then in the 80s. The upper right is one of the churches on Lincoln Avenue there. And then, I threw in these, these other pieces that kind of, so we did a parking, a parking survey back in 2018 for all apartment buildings close to campus, because we, we had this notion that we were trying to see if we were right or wrong, that there was just a lot of excess parking near the university. And, we did the survey and we found out that, that there was a lot of excess parking near the university. And when you see signs like this, you kind of understand that, yes, there's, you know, more parking than is needed. That's kind of just an outgrowth of us requiring too much parking in the zoning ordinance. So, if somebody has extra parking, they're, they're going to try to rent it out, which makes sense. Okay, alleys. I, I said mostly alleys in the district are intact, so here's just some images of alleys. They're in, in different states of repair. So, when I say intact, I mean the right-of-way is there. I don't mean they're all in great shape. Some of them are, like number 44 on the lower left, which is adjacent to 901 Western Avenue, which was our second-to-most recent building that was built there, but I think that was built in 2015, so it's, it's still been a while since that one was built. But, there's some alleys. And then sidewalks. There are sidewalks throughout the area. It is, most of them are pretty tree-lined. It's, it's pretty pleasant to walk down for that, for that reason. But, just some images of the sidewalks in the area. You know, they're, they're older though, because they're, they all seem to be four feet wide, whereas now we'd require five feet wide. But, yeah, and just some more images of that. Okay, and then on to buildings, building faces. So, three of these buildings, number three, number 11, and number 28, these all were built post-B-3U regulations, so after the district came into play. They all have parking on the surface level. Number 28 in the lower left, I think, is a good illustration of why we would want to require that first floor to have the 12-foot ceiling height, because that just makes for sort of, when the first floor is taller than the rest of the floors of the building, that makes for a better environment if you're just walking by. It, it makes it more pedestrian-friendly. That building kind of flips that on its head, no offense to whoever designed it, but it's, you know, that first floor is actually shorter, because the parking is sunken down a little ways, so just going by is a little, you know, walking by is a little disconcerting. It looks like there's something off, because the, that should be taller. Number 14 on the right was built pre-1990, so pre-current regulations, as was the building number 18 on the upper left, might be my favorite building in the district. I think that's just a six-unit apartment building on Springfield. Springfield's on the left side of that picture. I can't remember the cross street off the, top of my head there. And then, number 26, some of you may recognize that. That's one of, I think that's our most recent building here. And then, just other things you see throughout the district. Number 26 is actually interesting, and I can get into, there's, there's some parking things to talk about with that, if we want to talk about that. But, number 46, you'll see buildings with blank walls throughout the district, which again, are what we're proposing is, we're trying to get away from that, and what we're proposing would get away from that. So, again, more parking underneath buildings, another blank wall, number 38. Number 51 on the right is the 1988 addition to Hendrick House. It's the tallest building in the district. It's 10 stories, 125 feet. Okay, now we can relax and take a look at some greenery. The Boneyard Creek District does flow, flow through this district on the southern half, so I got a couple of good pictures of that while walking by. One of the churches has a nice garden on Springfield. And then again, there's, there's trees along, you know, along many of the sidewalks, so it's pretty pleasant. So, sorry, I should have flipped these slides, because then, you know, going to looking at waste enclosures and mechanical equipment is, probably should have come before the greenery. But, right now, so, so number 24 is interesting, because you have a dumpster within a required front yard, and that's totally allowed, or the, you know, that's, that's allowed and there's nothing wrong with it right now, but we'd like to get rid of that type of situation. Throughout the district, you see air conditioning units sort of on the outside of buildings or up on balconies while you're walking by. So, we'd like to, we'd like to slowly phase that out as, as properties get redeveloped. And there's a duck in the, in the Boneyard Creek. Okay, so. Let me find back to where I, okay. Yeah, that really, we can get into the details, as I'm sure we will, of the proposed text amendment, but I did just want to walk through some of that, give you kind of a feel for the district. So, once, when all is said and done, you will have three choices in this case. So, you can recommend approval of the proposed changes to council. You can recommend approval with any changes you'd like to see, or you can recommend denial. You'll not be surprised to know that staff is recommending approval of the changes as written. So, that concludes my report, and I, I really am looking forward to the discussion.
Thanks, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you.
Any questions for staff? Mr. Hopkins.
It appears we, this may be a weird way to do this, but it appears we have an audience. What, what I might say is, I, I need to frame how we approach this. Let me put it that way. The, the staff should be given great credit for doing lots of background work and developing this all the way through. What I used to tell my students is that if, when I write a lot, and I wrote in green ink, not red on purpose, it means you did enough that there was something to respond to. So, there are a lot of details and things I want to talk about, but I think it makes more sense to wait and do it as deliberation than to start out trying to decide what's a question and what's deliberation. But, I'll, you know, I'll, I don't know what other people have in mind. I'll defer.
I have some questions, but are there others that, I have some things that are definitely questions for staff, so I think I would ask.
So, why don't you start, and then if, once you've modeled it, if I can add, turn some of mine into questions, if it's appropriate.
Okay. Well, I don't want to jump in first, though. Are there others that have questions, or? Yeah? Okay. So, first question, what about the U of I properties? So, the, there's, I guess, just, can you clarify, do those also get rezoned, or are we doing something different with those?
So, they would, they would be subject to the new regulations, but if you look back, and I'm, sorry, I gotta, don't want to make anybody dizzy, but if you go back to the zoning map, sorry, this doesn't even show it that well. The U of I owns everything that's south of, or sorry, south, that's west of Harvey. I think they own, yeah, they own everything. So, all that green stuff west of Gregory and south of Springfield is also owned by the U of I. This whole area is essentially, so, so they own basically everything that's not in the, in the dotted light blue, that's, that's sort of not red. Well, actually, they own that red stuff on Harvey Street, south of University Avenue. So, they, they should probably rezone pretty much everything that they own, and I would like to see them do that at some point in, in the near future, because that should really all be conservation, recreation, education, so it should all be green. They aren't redeveloping that, any of their stuff anytime soon, as I understand it, so while technically, any changes we make would affect their properties. I don't, I think there's, there are ways to handle it going forward, once they're ready to sort of move forward with their plans for this area. But, I know in their master plan, they're not planning on doing anything here. This is sort of the, in the sort of medium to far future to do stuff here.
Okay, but the, the changes to the B-3U, I mean, they, they get rid of what is there currently, so those, however many properties on the, the west side of Harvey Street.
Yeah.
Those will take on these, these changes?
They, they would be, but we're not changing any, I'm pretty sure university is, is allowed in B-3U, so.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm just curious, because you left them off of a lot of the, the discussion and the, how you highlighted these.
Yeah, and I think, so if you included some of their properties, I mean, you can see it's mostly parking or vacant. Everything on here that they have that's B-3U is parking or vacant, so, you know, that, that might skew any of the sort of analysis or anything too, but.
Okay.
To follow up on that specific question, using the Gregory Street Plaza as an example, if the university developed any of west of Harvey in that kind of mode, what is the property tax implication for the city?
I'm not totally sure. I think with that, with Gregory Place, there's some sort of, I think, I think there's something in place, so we get some taxes from the businesses that are there.
That's my recollection as well.
Yeah.
So, this goes to deliberation. I think we want to think about how we treat that zoning, because I think we want to potentially signal or influence how the university imagines that. And the fact that it's currently R5. Anyway, it gets to deliberation.
Okay, sure. We can pick that back up.
But I wanted to stick it in, because it's specific to this question you raised.
Yeah. Okay, next question. So, one of the big changes is going from an FAR to a height limit, so there are much taller buildings that are allowed, one would assume, based on, I don't know, what, I didn't do any calculations with the current FAR and setbacks and the buildable area, but I assume that this is like 11, 10-to-12 story. and the buildable area, but I assume that this is like 11, 10 to 12-story buildings, maybe?
I think it'd be, yeah, 10, maybe 11.
Okay. So, do you have an estimate just generally, like how the buildable envelope has changed from the current development regulations to the proposed development regulations? Like on a typical parcel, are you, is the yield, you know, two times as much?
Yeah, I, no, I have not done that. It's kind of hard to get to a typical parcel, but yeah, that's a good point. But to the, sort of to the question of building height, yes, so currently, yeah, there is no maximum building height, so you could build as high as you could go. But with a, with a floor area ratio of, of four, which is what's there right now, you know, you might get, I mean, you could get something that's 12 stories tall, but then you'd just get not as much built
Right.
on the rest of the site. So, but we're not seeing, I don't know that we're seeing people really max, well, I guess we are, never mind. Okay.
Where, where did that come from, the 120-foot height limit? Because it seems a little out of context with at least what's currently built and with what the current, with the, what the surrounding or the adjacent zoning allows?
Yeah, so, when, when you're looking, and I don't have it up here on the screen, but I added, I put an exhibit in the, the staff memo that sort of compares the current B3U regulations with what they have done over in Champaign. So Champaign has the benefit of having something like eight or nine times the area that we have with the B3U district. So they have their multifamily university district, and then they have their campus business, one of their, some campus business, I think it's CB3, something like that. So they have a lot more land to develop. So they, they have the benefit of being able to say, okay, we want this one area to be the business-focused area, we want this other area to be multifamily only. We don't really have that benefit here. So we, part of the reason for the 120-foot is that's kind of a, a split in the middle between what, what they're allowing in their multifamily university and what they allow in their, in their business district. So multifamily university, they allow 75. In their business district, they allow 175. So, you know, having something in the middle might allow for, you know, for taller buildings, more, more density there, and also, you know, maybe more mixed-use buildings as well. Now I know, and maybe Andrew can speak to this, I don't know how many, how many developers are going to actually build anything higher than seven stories, because when you go over seven stories, you've got to, Andrew's, yeah, Andrew's saying this. So when you go over seven stories, you have to do all steel construction, so it's a lot more expensive. So the, you know, the likelihood that people are going to build that is not huge, but also it's, we don't want to preclude that if somebody wants to make that type of investment in, in this area. This area is, and I, I didn't really emphasize it before, but this is the, the best area in the city to build our property tax base. It's, it's pretty small. There's no other area that, that has sort of the characteristics of, of the land that would allow us to really maximize our, our property tax base. It's, it's west of Lincoln Avenue. It's right next to campus. It's, it's really our best shot to sort of position ourselves for the next 30, 40 years by, by allowing development here that's going to build our base.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I just wanted to get an explanation on the, the record for how you arrived at that.
Thank you.
Mr. Fell?
I can weigh in a lot, depending on how much people want to know. Okay, so, I do, this is my job, I do this a lot. So the way this, the development regulations are, are changed here, to me are perfectly appropriate for the district.
Excuse me, Andrew, is this discussion or do you?
I don't, I don't know. I mean, I'm getting there.
Okay, yeah.
You're making a statement.
I'm getting to a point.
Okay, sorry.
So, so, to speak to the previous point, the way, for instance, the parking regulations are, are tied to the, to the district, you, you're not going to be able to build anything very big because you can't get the parking on the site. So anecdotally, the, the parking requirement here suits you to build a three-story building on, on a site and fit your parking on the alley. On, on a normal residential lot, which is, most of these are 66 by 132, 66-foot lot, gets you enough parking to build a three-story building. So it's very hard.
Current.
Well, under, no, these regulations.
Under the new.
Under the new regulations, that's what happens, right? It's, it's way harder under the current regulations than it will be under the new regulations. The difficulty to build a large building is to aggregate enough land to do that, and that is nearly impossible now. If a developer wants to, to take the effort and money and, and time to do that, I'm all for that, because we get a much better, higher-density, better thing in this portion of our city, right? So the way the current regulations are, are, are written in here doesn't really let somebody build a very large building. Because the other thing that happens with, with these regulations, so everyone is kind of clear, is, is we've, they've eliminated setbacks in FAR. However, you cannot build a building to the property line because you, there's a limit. The, the closer you are to the property line, the higher the fire rating, the fewer windows you have. So if you're building an apartment building, you have to build it in from the property line, or you cannot get windows to build an apartment building on the side. So the fact that, that we waive setbacks and FAR and OSR doesn't really affect a whole lot on the type of building that can get built on any of these lots, in, in reality.
Okay. Yeah, great. That's, that's good context to have. Okay, so you kind of answered one of my other questions, which was, how does this compare with the, the rules for adjacent property in Champaign, or similarly situated property in Champaign? So you kind of explained that. Why not get rid of parking requirements entirely? Because it's my understanding that Champaign has in their campus town neighborhood, and I haven't heard that there have been issues that just let the developers provide what they think the market wants.
Right, yeah. And I, and as I understand it, you know, there are some examples in the, in, in the materials I shared of, of buildings that have been built without any parking in Champaign. And I understand developers are, you know, now, or a lot of them are still providing some parking on site, but I wanted to show some that had, that had no parking. But a lot of those sort of go along with the, so the regulation we're proposing is that if you have less than 20 units in your building, then, or sorry, less than 20 bedrooms, let me, I should read that. I know, is, is one or the other, just bear with me. You wouldn't have any parking requirements for sort of smaller residential buildings. So that would allow you to redevelop the smaller sites.
Bedrooms.
Pardon?
Bedrooms.
Bedrooms, 20 bedrooms, thank you. So that would kind of reflect what we've seen over in Champaign. Also, you know, to be, to be honest, when we proposed reducing parking requirements in the past, we've met with some resistance. So we didn't necessarily want to, we, we think this is a really, really good text amendment as it's written. We don't think that, that reducing parking requirements by half for larger residential uses is going to really eliminate, you know, larger apartment buildings from being built if people want to. So we didn't want to, you know, essentially ask for too much and, and have this get bogged down in a discussion about, about eliminating parking requirements altogether.
Okay. But there was no, you didn't receive any comments with concerns about reducing parking requirements or getting rid of parking requirements?
We had one, one of the people that came to, well, to both of the public meetings had some concerns about parking, but, but nothing other than that, no.
Okay. Okay, and then my last question. So, yeah, this is, this is envisioned as, as a mixed-use area, but if what's happened in Champaign's campus town is any, you know, gives us any insight into how this would possibly redevelop, it's mostly been residential. And where there have been requirements for ground, ground floor commercial development, it's gone unfilled. And I think they've eliminated some of those requirements over time, at least in certain corridors. So, knowing that this is likely to be redeveloped as buildings that are entirely residential with the first floor residential, is the, and this is, maybe you can provide some insight into this too, is the 10-foot, oh, foot? No, the 10-foot, it's a 10-foot minimum, 20-foot maximum setback. Is that
Yeah.
sufficient? I'm just thinking of the building to the north, which, you know, in my opinion, doesn't do a good job managing the transition from the public realm to the private, you know, first-floor residential spaces.
Yeah, like on the Vine Street side?
Yeah. Does that, are we, are you comfortable that that is addressed with the setbacks? Because there's no requirement, there's landscaping requirements, but not necessarily buffers or screening requirements specific to how the landscaping is used, I guess.
And so am I comfortable with the buildings have to be between 10 and 20 feet?
Well, because when you look at, like, you said your, the example of one of the pictures, you know, you said you liked this building, and this was pre, you know, a lot of the, the residential buildings have a change in grade. So the first floor is, you step up a little bit. So there's some separation, there's some visual separation, some physical separation from the public realm of the street and the sidewalk to the first-floor residential, you know, apartments, which I assume is just left to the, to the whims of the developers and their architects. But is that something that should, we should be thinking about building into the development guidelines, I guess is my question?
So that's something that I, that I thought about. And, you know, I'm, I'm aware of a lot of sort of the, I guess, best practices for, for design and things. And I, I wanted to fight the urge to insert too much into this, because I don't want to be overly prescriptive. Because I think a lot of times you create a regulation with a good intent, and then, you know, you don't realize until a while down the road that it's, it's creating unintended consequences. So, the whole, the whole point of this, or one of the, one of the points of this was to, to try and be, try and build in some good design, but not be super prescriptive. But we could add something, you know, we could add nuance if you, if y'all would like to, to add nuance, because that's what you're here for. But I just want, want you to know sort of the, the intent that was behind this, is to, to be pretty simple. And then, you know, if we need to tweak it later, we can. If we start getting a bunch of residential buildings that feel like they're, you know, something's just off about them, we can kind of point to it and, and change, change that.
Okay, thanks. Any questions?
On that, the building to the north here has zero setback.
Essentially, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's not.
Apartments are a minimum of 10 feet.
Right, yeah.
So that building couldn't be built under these regulations.
Correct, yeah. That's in the B4 district, so B4 has no setbacks.
I just, I wanted.
Yeah, that one's not 10 feet back.
There's a flipside question to all that. And there's, I mean, there's a whole bunch of this stuff I want to talk about at length.
Yeah.
Mr. Fell?
This actually is a question.
Oh, thank you.
For instance, someone redevelops a lot in the middle of the block and the alley is trashed on both sides. Who fixes it?
I do not know, but I can get, I can get that answer before we, before we go to council.
It's an issue that has come up in the past.
Okay, are there any further questions for staff? All right, if not, Mr. Hopkins?
I'm up with one. The, in various circumstances, we have statements like lot line abutting a street are the setback. The setback is from the property line, which is the right-of-way line. Yes?
Yeah, but that's also the, the lot line.
Okay. So, for example, in the images you were showing of, I think Springfield, there's actually a wide right-of-way, and the sidewalk is six or eight feet from the curb, and there's a sidewalk, and then there's another 10-foot minimum setback. Am I, am I correct in how I'm understanding these, these dimensions?
Yeah, I mean, the, yeah, the, the yard starts at the, at the property line, which can be, you know, which in, in certain areas, sometimes the property line is not next to the sidewalk, and that gets, gets interesting.
But the sidewalk and the, whatever you want to call it, it's got multiple names everywhere.
Yeah.
The curb to the lot-side edge of the sidewalk is right-of-way.
Mm-hmm.
And that is not actually what's in these, referred to in these regulations. So we could, for example, say that part of the problem with the house, the property just north of us
Yeah.
is that the right-of-way is not big enough to accommodate a public sidewalk. And the right-of-way and the sidewalk positionings on these different streets are very different.
Mm-hmm.
But, okay, I just want to make sure that I
Yeah.
knew what that meant.
But in most cases, when, when you look at the map, the lot line starts just on the private side of the sidewalk.
It, it does. And that, I mean, I would say that's the case for the, you know, for well over 90% of the lots in, in the city. It's just certain areas you run into issues where, you know, I think Mr. Fell had, had to apply for variance for someone to, because the, because it started 10 or 15 feet back of the sidewalk, and you just, yeah.
Okay. Okay, any further questions for staff? All right, so I'll go over the rules for a public hearing. Anyone in favor of the proposed changes will be allowed to address the commission, followed by anyone opposed. Then at the end, if needed, we can allow staff a chance to address any of the concerns that are raised. Then we'll close the public input portion, discuss, and possibly vote. So I'll open it up to the public. If you'd like to address the commission, please come forward, state your name, and sign in. Tell us what you have to say. We'll start with anyone who is in favor of the proposed changes. Welcome.
Hello, everyone. I need to push this. Okay. My name is Tim. I own one of the properties within the, the B3U zoning districts. I think this is a very important time for this area. I think if we learn from the history from most of the Urbana zonings on mixed use, we have seen that, can you, can you hear me?
Your microphone's on.
Okay. Is it my call?
Yeah, you might just have to lean forward and to.
Yeah. So most of the mixed use.
Or, you can always pull it closer too, if you're feeling like you're leaning over too much.
Okay. Sorry. Okay. So most of the mixed use that we have seen historically in Urbana that, in my humble opinion, they don't really get to become, they don't really get the intent use of the mixed use that we have seen in Urbana. And I think most of people agree on the committee here. They will end up to become a residential, mostly single-family or even maybe multifamily, but mostly single-family. And then you got to ask why that happened? Why is the mixed intent use for the zoning mix, like the mixed use zoning that we have so far doesn't work? And, you know, the area, you know, around Springfield, or even in the residential neighborhood right there, that we really just don't see much of the mixed-use development. And I believe the staff has been working very hard to really reverse or re-engineering these, to actually make it work in this proposal. And then I'm glad to see they lead the way and do all the research necessary for these, which address, you know, a big part on the parking issues on here, the setbacks, the height, you know, all these are very important. And so for these, I think now we potentially have a chance to actually see mixed-use development happening in this area. And I will also want to just give a little feedback to, or even give a little background on why I have seen in this area, why it's so important to have, you know, this type of development. of developments. So, me and my partner, we also own Bake Lab, that is right across the street from Lincoln. It is, when the building was up, it was like a battle, I think, you know, to kind of introduce the concepts into the neighborhood. But once it was built, it was a game changer. We're seeing so much pedestrian traffic, like, increased pedestrian traffic. One, one of the battles that we had was tried to put in outdoor patio seating, right? And that, the open space that's available there to really build up a core door where people get a highway coming into the area, that's the first thing that they see that's beautiful and friendly. And so, we're seeing something very interesting that's happening, is that really for that area, aside from the University Avenue, for the most of a residential area, that if we be, if we could introduce something sensible and friendly to the developer to come in, we could see a lot more foot traffic happen. And that, I believe, from the university side of the, whether it's students or residents, they are more likely to venture into our downtown if that area is built even more friendly and they start going east. And that's a big part, I think, for that area to be, to have more friendly zoning ordinances. The second thing I want to stress is that underground, we're seeing a shift, a shift of young people from, or younger people, from small town are moving into Champaign-Urbana, like, surrounding town. We're talking about St. Joe, Rantua, Mattoon, even Bloomington. That these young people are, in the past, like, two years, we're seeing that they're not staying in Decatur, they're not seeing their town, they're coming in looking for opportunities. And there are these populations are moving in, they don't want to live on the outskirts of the city, they actually want to live in the inner, more, more things for them to do, more friends for them to make, first of all. Second of all, we're seeing that with the engineering campus, the professors and the, a lot of outside investors, they are interested in setting out offices adjacent to the campus area. Actually, personally, I have met about three to four investors, and these are, people are talking about medical, you know, with the medical school, they want to do something here. We're talking about, you know, some professors, they have grad students, they, they are setting up small offices, and they, they need to be so close to campus. And Research Park just doesn't cut it, it's just too far out there. And so, and then Champagne is just so saturated. And then, so this area, they love it, because it's right next to their offices, to their daily, you know, where their, their daily walk, right there. And so, it's really important, I think, that we're in a critical point, that we can get the best of both worlds, which is to have some sort of office mixed use available, and then have residential on top. And then that can bring in a very, very different, or even more modern, design, I would say, for this area. So, for these, I really support, you know, the developments that we are seeing. So far, like, us benefiting from it, obviously, you know, with the North Lincoln area. And then, but however, like, with the B3U current area, I do think if we could implement something that is not overly regulated, but let the developer, you know, take, they take the risk, you know, and then they build something sensible, and then make it friendly for investors and residents, you know, that they will enjoy the space. And then their creativity will just change that entire area. And then, and I can say, like, I think for us, every day we are looking at, you know, the, the area across the street, and we're definitely seeing something is changing, especially the population are building up from retreats, from latitude, you know, like, right kind of north of the university. And then, there is definitely an increase of populations we're seeing. And then, I think that we have some sort of momentum that's happening, and then this is a perfect opportunity to capture it. That's it, thank you.
Okay, thanks for your input. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the commission in support? Anyone wishes to address the commission in opposition of the proposed changes? All right. Mr. Garcia, did you have any response to any of the comments?
I do not.
All right, so seeing as there is no one else from the public that wants to provide input, we'll declare the public input portion closed, and now go into a discussion amongst the commission, and possibly entertain motions to vote. So, is there any discussion on the proposal?
So, I, I think it was just really interesting when our staff presented the proposal, is that it was intended to have more office use, but when you have, I build Research Park, that shift sets out. One trend, because my office is in Research Park, one trend we see now is that we wish we can be closer to campus. So, that also speaks to what the public input session, Tim has provided, that there is desire to be closer to campus, rather than have all the parkings in the world, but so low density doesn't feel as great as some, something closer to campus. So, the, I, I, I do feel there's a, even a shift in commercial real estate trend that they favor more density, rather than tons of parking.
Thanks, Ms. Yeh. Any other discussion? Mr. Fell?
This is actually a question. I probably should know this, but the amount of parking required is now reduced to, I mean, buildings containing twenty bedrooms or more. What about business use? Is parking required for that? So, if we do a mixed-use thing, does another use not require any parking?
Correct, not the way it's written.
Mr. Hopkins?
So, I guess I'm ready to start deliberating. And, I mean, it is, it's just sort of all over the place. So, maybe I'll start by responding in a way to the two most recent comments. Chen Chi's comment about the demand for office, which, not that I'm interested in increasing the length of the line at the Bake Lab, but, you know, hearing that part of it as well. I, I think we need to be clear on how mixed use, the conventional wisdom, maybe another way to preface this is, I've been around long enough that the greatest failures of planning are success. That is, we get so convinced that we know exactly what should be done, that we do it everywhere to the limit. And there's some characteristics of this that worry me a little bit in that regard. The image of mixed use that much of this conventional is based on is the notion of retail first floors with glass windows that you walk by, and it's exciting and interesting. And, oh, by the way, there's something upstairs, usually residential. The Gregory Plaza is the closest example I think we have of this idea. And much, most of it, much of it, I think, still, is offices of the university. I could be wrong, I mean, that was the case. And the-
The biggest portion on the, I think, Urbana side of that building, second floor, is School of Social Work.
Right. And, so, if, if, it's not, I'm not convinced that there is demand for retail commercial sufficient to support the notion that this is a mixed-use neighborhood. In fact, somebody else's, I think Dustin already raised this. Offices don't necessarily have to be on first floors. In fact, offices may well be not on first floors. Residential on first floors is a little tricky in high density, as the facility to the north of us suggests. But it, it has to be done reasonably well. So, some of the specific regulations in this seem to me unnecessary, and maybe making it more difficult to get the kinds of things we want. And Andrew is the one who can sort of quickly recognize what can actually be done, because we're not talking about the fire code, we're not talking about whatever. Whereas I'm, I'm sort of limited to thinking about the land development code and the zoning ordinance, and what's, what's possible. So, for example, in the intent statement, "on-street parking," we're implying that's good. Okay, in this neighborhood, it's not clear to me that's true, because we have small, small, narrow streets. I don't think we want on-street parking on Springfield. I noticed that in Champagne's ordinance for the MFU, that there is no on-street parking permitted on the building face side. That makes me, is maybe not always the right thing to do either, but sometimes I think it is the right thing to do. So, I'm concerned that we're promoting on-street parking. I'm also concerned that we have the idea that you can't park in front of a building, because I think part of the way that some of the retail works on Gregory Plaza is precisely because there is angle parking in front of the buildings. So, some of these things, I think, are, are based on, on a particular image we have that doesn't necessarily achieve what we, what we might want to achieve. It's not clear to me that on, on, say, Springfield, where you have a fifteen-foot right-of-way edge, that you also want a ten-foot setback. And if you're going to have a setback, and you want it to have trees, which is one of the reasons to have a setback on a street where the curb is not, the curb to sidewalk is not big enough for trees, what you want is the lot-side setback to be big enough for trees. Ten feet is not. Does that mean I don't want that regulation? It means that some of these regulations are not, are going to get in the way, and maybe we, we can be even looser than we're, we're being. So, so that, that's sort of one set of things. On building height, I'm skeptical. I mean, in my view, this neighborhood is more like the Champagne MFU than the Champagne CB3. And the Champagne MFU is a hundred and seventy-five feet, I think?
That's the CB. The MFU is seventy-five?
Seventy-five, okay. I'm sorry, I, yeah, I'm, I'm out of whack. The MFU is the six- or seven-story building limit, okay? And I think that's the appropriate limit here, not the CB3 limit. And I think that's partly because we've also gotten rid of the FAR and the OSR. Now, Hendrick House, as a ten-story building, sitting on that corner, is, in my view, okay, as are the Illinois Street Residence Falls, okay? But that's partly because they have huge setbacks and relatively low FARs. Whereas, in this ordinance as written, we could end up with a full-block, twelve-story building, and to be, to be viable, it would have to be a full block, so you'd have to be able to assemble it. But if you could assemble it, you could build a twelve-story building with ten-foot setbacks all the way around, and no, until the fire codes come in, is my question, but, but no other setbacks, so I'm, I'm-
I'll go, I don't want to derail, but anecdotally, we did a line I in on campus. That's, that's a seven-story building, so it's within the seventy-five-foot height limit. It was only a seven-story building within that height limit, because that was the regulation. Our footprint, the lot, was less than eighty feet square. So, it, it, it's, that, I will say, that's also a no-parking requirement was, was there. So, we, we got, I'll say, that happened because there was no parking, but the, the notion that the lot is small and you can't build high isn't necessarily true. I, I would say that, that in this reg, in, in this district, it would be absolutely appropriate to put a seventy-five-foot height limit, and partly because, again, this, the zoning ordinance shouldn't be tied to the building code, but that's one of the things in the building code, is a seventy-five-foot floor level, which is what this is, is a high-rise. And once you're a high-rise, this is completely different construction type. And so, a seventy-five-foot height limit limits you under the building code to not be a high-rise, and, and to here, that's appropriate, because, again, anecdotally, one of the things you never see in a city is a building that is between eight and twelve stories tall, because there's no economy to do that. Because once you're eight stories tall, you're a high-rise, and that's, you spend the money to get eight, you gotta go higher. There's no economy to be nine, ten, or eleven. So, here, a seventy-five-foot height limit, I think, is, is, would be an absolutely appropriate limit on this district, because, because it would be extremely rare that any developer would, would dream of building taller than that.
Well, I, I think it's also, do we want them to? And I think it's partly that we don't want them to in this district.
Right. I, I do want to, to, again, as part of the discussion, to kind of talk, talk to one of the loose points about the, what the setback does. Because in the, in the, in the reality of the building code, the setback matters, but what, what matters more than the setback is a fire separation distance. And a fire separation distance on a street side goes to the middle of the street right away. So, a fire separation distance on the, on the street side of a building means that you can build your building on the property line and put as many windows in there as you want. We don't build close to the property line, because that's a fire rating and fewer windows, right? The closer you are to the property line, the fewer windows you can build. But it's not necessarily the property line that's the issue, it's a fire separation distance. And a property line that abuts another property line designates your fire separation distance. When you're on a street, the center line of the street designates the fire separation distance, so you're- So your window count gets way higher. So, now, our job, and I'm gonna speak as an architect, the, what we do has changed so much in the last 10 years, and it has to do with the economy. It used to be, when you had a building, we had setbacks, we wanted to articulate the building, to do a nice artistic building, because we could do that. The economy now means that we build a building as a rectangular box to the setback line everywhere around. That we, the, again, a very simplistic way to put this is we, the bankers deal with, it's called a cap rate. And the cap rate on a building used to be about eight and a half when I started this business. And now it's about seven, right? So our buildings have to be 30% more efficient to achieve the same goal for the developer. Which means our artistic ability vanishes, and we're forced to build this building to a setback all the way around. So, to, to your point, what's gonna happen on the front and the street side of these buildings, they're gonna get built to that, to the property line probably, on those sides, because that's the biggest thing that can get built. And on the interior lot lines, they're gonna be held back from that.
Because of the fire separation.
Because of the fire separation instance. So, so, the, the, these development regulations, I think, give us more appropriate buildings in this district, but just in a different way. The, the former regulations are, is an algebra problem that is really hard to solve. And, and creates convoluted pieces of a building that don't make sense. The, the way these are written, getting rid of the, the, the more onerous restrictions allows more freedom to do a better building on, on these sites, in my opinion.
But, but which restrictions that are being gotten rid of?
Getting rid of the FAR and the OSR and reducing the parking achieves the goals, I think, that, that all of us want to achieve. And, but in a way, they're, they're only partially achieved through the zoning ordinance. They're additionally achieved through the building code. And unfortunately, we can't, I, I don't think, we can rely on the building code to achieve what this, what this body is supposed to achieve.
Yeah, or do much about it if it gets in our way.
So, Andrew, I wanted to hear from an architect perspective, given this updated zoning regulation, do you see any spot that might become problematic, might create unintentional consequences? Looks like you're pretty in favor of it, but is there anything you think could be problematic?
I would say I'm absolutely in, in favor of most of it, not all of it. There are always unintended consequences, but they're unintended, so I don't know what they are right now. There are districts very similar to this in Champagne. And the unintended consequences are usually, we want, the developer wants to build a building, and he doesn't have enough parking to build it. And then we just have to solve that. But that's a greed problem and not a zoning problem. So, so, really, no. I, I see, I don't see any real detriment to these changes as an architect, in an architectural perspective, or development perspective, from what I know about it.
Okay. A more detailed one I have is that there's a lot of expectations of first floor, how the first floor is going to be. Is that going to create a handicap in development proposal? Is it really just going to, is it written in a way that if a developer do want to put a first-floor residential, they're prohibited to do so?
Most of this district, well, I can only speak really to the people that we work with, right? And, which is a limited number of developers. But most of them are, are not, someone to develop these lots is in a business. And, and they're probably in the apartment business. They're not in the business business, right? They don't want to, to deal with commercial business in their building. They're apartment developers. So most of these are going to be built as apartment buildings, if they can. We have done buildings, a tenant who, in one of the buildings, we have done on Springfield Avenue, when there were regulations to put commercial areas in these buildings, I believe one of them is now going on more than 20 years without a tenant.
So, that, that is exactly my question, that I don't want this zoning update create a situation that people are forced to put a mixed use. If they wish to do first-floor residential, I hope this does not stop them from doing so.
Right. I, I, I think they should be able to do first-floor residential to be successful.
Just to be clear, there's nothing in the zoning ordinance as written that requires commercial on the ground floor?
Right, yeah, and that's by design. So, the 12-foot clear ceiling height is in there so that, you know, things change over time. So, you might build it, it might be all residential right now. The whole area might get developed, and then it's like, wow, there's, you know, thousands of people living in this area. I might want to put a restaurant on the first floor. Boy, I'm glad there's a 12-foot clear ceiling height on the first floor. So it's, it's to allow them to be reused in the future, but it's, it's, by design, it's not to force any commercial anywhere. But it's just to say, if you want to do commercial, you can. If you want to do residential, you can. We don't want to force it. But we want, we want to leave that option open. Because if you just do like a nine or 10-foot height on the first floor, that's not gonna work. Nobody wants to eat in a restaurant with a nine-foot ceiling.
And can, yeah, so I, I just, so I'm gonna probably sound like the dissenter about the concern about the first-floor residential. And I love the, to me, the language is broad enough to allow for it. And I think, thinking forward, not present, if you increase the density, I know I have a desire to live in walkable areas. And in cities that I'm attracted to, have buildings, multiple buildings that have mixed use, that make it walkable. Because I want to be able to have both a place that I can live, but also stores, fitness centers, all of the things. And the more density you have, the more available services. Because if I have to then turn around and get into a car to go to someplace, like yoga or whatever, defeats the purpose of being in a walkable area, that's highly dense. And so I, I think if you're thinking about wanting to attract people who live and work, right? If we're building up the area, who, with people who might have co-working, right? And just think about the broader demographic of the audience, who might want an office space, but also want more things to do in their lives. Allowing for that in 20, 30 years and building for that and having space for it increases it rather than, you know, kind of what we create. We're, it's population-dense, but then there's sprawl all on the outside, because we didn't allow enough room and development. So, I, I mean, I think I like the "both and" and not the, let's not consider that we want, we want to increase business development. Because, again, in cities that I'm attracted to, they have lots of spaces that are "both and" and not "either or". And that's just because I don't want to drive.
So, just to try and organize what's been said so far, there's been a couple of comments about the height limit. And it seems like there's a proposal on the table to make a change or suggest a change to a height limit of 75 feet. Is there, other than Mr. Fell and Mr. Hopkins, does anyone have any other thoughts on this, comments? Mr. Andreessen?
At the risk of sounding maybe slightly ignorant to this, if we don't change the wording now and just leave it at 120-foot cap, developers don't have to go up to that, right?
Oh, no.
So I guess why not just leave it opening if somebody ever did want to go up that high?
I don't think we want it.
We don't want it? Okay.
Well, that's a perspective.
Well, I think there's, there's the economics of buildings that we've been hearing suggests that it's not gonna be more than six or seven stories. And then, there's also, the question that I asked initially during the presentation had to do with more about, like, what, what the, the context is. And, you know, to the north on University, that's B3, right?
Correct.
That's, I think that has the current rules, which is an FAR of four and no height limit. So, realistically, you're probably, you know, around this seven, eight-story type of building. And the economics would tell you that it's gonna be seven stories. So, just when you look at the, around, around at the surround, when you look at the surrounding development, it seems contextually what's more appropriate is something more around the 75-foot range.
How high is the Gather building? Is it 75?
Which?
What?
Gather, where the Baker Lab is.
Yeah, probably six, it's six floors, I think, six floors, so it's...
I'm pretty sure it is.
It's close to 75.
Yeah, I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure it's, I'm pretty sure there's a required, or a condition in their special use permit that said it couldn't be taller than 75, except there were some, like, mechanical or stairwells that were allowed to go up a little bit higher.
I think that's pretty comfortable in terms of urban space.
Yeah. When I was looking at this, I was thinking about, like, what's the pattern we're creating? And, you know, there's taller buildings along the Green Street corridor in Champagne. There's taller buildings in both of the downtowns. And then, we would potentially have this pocket of taller buildings that would be set apart in this area here. And thinking if that, you know, is something that really makes sense with the way the rest of the neighborhood has been developed. And that was something that I had questions about, too. So, okay, so it seems like there, we have some consensus about that as a potential change in whatever motion we make. Mr. Hopkins, you raised a couple of other points about on-street parking. And I think I heard this right, the setback maybe being too large along some streets when we account for the right-of-way distance on, like Springfield, for example. So, are you thinking of something that's maybe more nuanced in terms of, like, mapping certain standards to certain corridors within the district, or?
I guess, the... I, I think we have to figure out what we're trying to accomplish. And, and my reaction is that a 10-foot setback from the sidewalk doesn't really make much sense. That is, what's its purpose? And then we're saying it can't be all grass. So, where it's like conventional foundation planting, I mean, I, I'm...
Doesn't make sense in that it's too small or too large?
It's neither, is the point. It's not small enough and it's not large enough. It's, it's space that becomes, you know, if, what, what is it supposed to be? Do we want a wider sidewalk? If we want a wider sidewalk, then we, we should take into account how we're gonna modify the land development code to require a wider sidewalk in some zoning districts. Or, if that's what we mean, then we should say that the setback must accommodate sidewalk with appropriate for the first-floor uses. Or, otherwise, we just, we, we have these little strips of green grass that are a pain to maintain. And don't accomplish anything. You can't plant any trees, they're too small. You can't, you can't relate it to the curb of the street because you haven't taken that into account.
What size, what size would be required to plant trees? I'm ignorant of this.
I'm guessing 20 feet. But I don't think we want to require that, because I don't think we want to require them to plant trees. Especially on streets where we've got street trees. Which on some of these streets, as your images show, we do have. So what I'm trying to do is get away from a notion that we know the details. I, I have the same reaction to the 12-foot first-floor requirement. And I have the same reaction to no under, no first-floor parking. I think hidden first-floor parking can be a really efficient way to use first floors when you don't have anywhere near the demand for retail, walkable, commercial space.
Well, just to clarify, there's nothing that prevents first-floor hidden parking, structured parking within a building.
Except it has to be 12 feet tall.
Yes. Yes.
Which doesn't quite make sense.
I'll, I'll jump on Lou's train a little bit. As the design professional, I want to get rid of every additional regulations in the CMU district. Because the, I, I know what you're trying to do, but legislating good design is impossible. I know that some of these things are important. And I will go back to one of my first cases on the plan commission was the Easterbanna Design Regulations, where I was the only one that voted against all those. And I would say that our architecturally most famous building in Urbana cannot be built under any of these regulations. The Erlanger House is undoubtedly our most famous architectural building, which violates every single, I believe, design proclamation in the Easterbanna Neighborhood Association, and probably every one of these.
And so does the Baker House next to me, in my box close.
To me, and I, I understand what, what staff is trying to do. But to me, as a design professional, regulating what a design professional can do in the unique context of the building he has to design is not appropriate. I may have a client that absolutely cannot have a 12-foot first floor or cannot have 20% transparent glass on the front of his building. We're doing a lab right now for someone who's a professor, who, an independent lab, who wanted to build it, probably in this neighborhood couldn't. We're building it in Champagne. He can't have windows in the front of his lab. He probably would have built it here if he could. So, those are the, so the design regulations limit what can happen here. Good design happens anyway, right? So does bad design. But none of these get rid of bad design.
Is 20% transparency, is that a lot? I mean, that seems like a little to me, so I'm just curious from a design perspective.
It's not a lot. I can say...
It needed zero.
Yeah, some need zero. I can say, the, the first time Champagne did this, the, the, the planners in Champagne put in certain zoning districts, the building had to be 40% glass on a street face of the building. And the building code says, we're only allowed 30. So, we had to cut, so all of those buildings had to compensate in other ways. Spending tremendous amount of money because the planners didn't understand what they were doing with a, with a design regulations. Because they wanted their buildings to look good without understanding what it was doing in the real world. Now, these regulations are way less onerous than anything, I'll say Champagne did. But I still don't want them. Because I want the freedom, as a design professional, to design the building. My client wants me to design without having to be restricted by these.
So, I mean, the simple solution for starting, for getting this moving, might be Andrew suggesting of getting rid of all of these. If, section V7. But, so, let me sort of step through them. Main entrance facing the street. Okay? If the, if somebody on one of these blocks did a project the size of the complex where the Bake Lab is, they would have at least two, if not four, facing streets. So, do we really mean that these apply to all four? I, I don't know, but I don't think that's what we intend. But that's sort of what we say. Must have 20%, at least 20% transparent glass. Now, again, we can use the buildings to the north of us as an example. On the side streets, at least on the north side, there is not 25%, 20% glass. Because of the way the apartments are designed and fit into the complex, it doesn't work to do that. So, I, I, I don't think we need that. And if, and, and the 20% glass as written is to the facade. So you could have none on the first floor. You could have none on the first two floors. And which I would say has sort of... You could have none on the first two floors, in which I would say has, sort of, has nothing to do with what the pedestrian experience is going by necessarily. The parking is not allowed in front yards. I think the way we avoid that becoming a problem is that angle parking would actually be within the right-of-way. But if the property owner wanted to provide the space for angle parking beyond the out, the right-of-way to create, in effect...
I think it's easier than that, because we got rid of the setbacks, we don't have a front yard. There's no front yard.
Well, but there's a 10 to 20-foot setback.
It's a setback, not a yard.
Well, there's a 10-foot, a 10-foot required yard.
So it can be within the setback, because it's not a front yard? No, the yard is the setback amount, right?
Yeah, so if, if we were to remove that piece that says parking is not allowed in front yards, you would still not be allowed to park in front yards. Right now, you are not allowed elsewhere in the zoning ordinance, and this is the problem with the zoning ordinance, is that you have to dig around for all of these pieces, so...
Right.
I'm trying to put, I was trying to put everything, this was sort of a redundant thing, but also an explicit thing, so that people just know when they're looking. They say, oh, I can't put any parking in the front yard. You can take that out, it would have the same effect, because it's currently in the zoning ordinance.
But, but I can put a loop driveway in a front yard in a residential district.
Yeah, that's different.
And it's different because I can only park four cars in it instead of...
That's, that's not what the zoning ordinance says, there's, there's nuance all throughout this thing, so...
Okay, so, I, I don't think we want to put this in here if we don't really know what it means.
Well, I, I'm, I'm sorry, Kevin, but legitimate question, doesn't, we have no setbacks, right? So, we have no yards, there's no front yard.
There is, it's a required...
Setback.
Yeah, there's a required 10-foot.
20-foot.
That's what I was getting at before, which I don't think should be there.
There's a 10-foot minimum and a 20-foot maximum.
Yeah. Your required yard is between 10 and 20 feet.
So, just on the front, all right.
There's no setbacks on the sides, but the fire regulations are going to require distance anyway, so you're going to have that.
Right, and that, that was by design. I think a lot of times, our zoning ordinance sort of acts as a redundancy to the building code, so, so eliminating side and rear yards, that doesn't mean there's going to be no setback, but I talked to our building official, and he gave me all the info about fire ratings, fire-rated walls and all that, and openings, and it's already covered by the building code, so nobody's, you know, going to build up to the edge.
Fire-rated wall and have lot line...
Yeah, well...
Do a lot line on a fire-rated wall.
Correct, there, it, it's, it's very complicated, but you can, you can build a wall right on the property line if you want, it just has to be a...
Is your microphone on, Andrew?
Oh, yeah, sorry, I'm too far away. You can build, you can build a appropriately fire-rated wall right on the property line, it can't, it can have no openings in it, and there's a certain, I think it's, it depends on your building type and what's in it and your...
Right, duplexes, I mean, side, what do you call, zero lot line houses are built that way all the time, all the buildings downtown are built that way. So it's not, it's not impossible, it's...
No, sorry, I didn't mean to give that intent, it's just that it's not going to be a, a common thing that we see, and, you know, to me, if a building is safe and meets the building, safety, you know, meets the building code, that is more important to me than occasionally getting a building that's built on the property line.
Yeah, well, and, and this goes back to sort of my attitude, I'm not sure we want to prevent people from doing zero-outline buildings. That's one of the ways you get density. So, we're allowing that, but we're not allowing it on the face, and the face, if there's a street, it's not clear to me, if I, I mean, living on a corner a lot, I'm used to this problem, it's not clear to me how these rules apply when the building has two street faces.
There's a, so the, it, it would apply to both sides. If you have a building that has two street faces, it applies to both, both sides.
Yeah, and I, so I think that's problematic.
Well, I think zero lot line buildings, knowing that this might be likely residential buildings, could be problematic, too. So, I don't think they...
Because...
What we see in the apartment building on Vine Street to the north here.
What's wrong with that?
You have a sidewalk, and then you have someone's apartment building, someone's windows for their bedroom, living room, that are abutting up against the sidewalk.
The zero lot line is between the buildings.
No, I thought you were talking about getting rid of setbacks, though, as well, getting rid of the...
On the front.
Well, the, the only setback we have is on the front.
Yeah, but are, I thought I heard you...
And I'm concerned that the range we're setting, between, between 10 and 20 feet, is sort of a bad compromise.
Do you want to get rid of the lower range?
They'll just have a maximum of 20 feet?
It's an interesting idea, actually. How is that going? Have to think through how it behaves, but because...
Champaign has it.
What?
Champaign has it.
In MFU? What's, is Champaign's MFU got a front setback?
Your max, there's a maximum 20-foot setback.
Where is that at?
If, if the MFU is zero to 20, then I, I think that's another reason to, you know, as an option that seems to have some benefits, would make sense to do.
But that zero could be a problem unless there's something else that describes the, how the transition between the right-of-way, the public realm, and the private space is addressed.
Yes.
Which is not currently in here, so...
Right, but I don't think the minimum 10 does that.
Well, yeah, it provides space, that's it.
Can I speak to the intent of that? I mean, the intent is to have something, because we don't want buildings built right on the sidewalk, because, I mean, the way this, this district is now, that doesn't make sense. I don't know that I would want to see that in the future. I mean, the, the only place we have zero setbacks is in our downtown business district, where it makes sense, we already have wide sidewalks, buildings come into the sidewalk. So the intent was to have something there, but not be super onerous, not require a really large setback, not require a really small setback.
So the B3 has a zero setback, right?
The B4 has a zero...
B3, it's on University Avenue, Bake Lab has a zero setback.
B3 is, I think it's probably 15.
Or do they not have a zero setback, maybe that's how they...
Yeah, it's 15.
15-foot setback, minimum.
On the B3?
Yes.
So the Bake Lab has a 15-foot setback?
Yes, they got a variance for the outdoor structure, but otherwise, they had to have a 15-foot setback.
But, but, so that one doesn't because of a variance, is that what you're saying?
Only for where the, the outdoor seating is, but their sidewalks are within...
Okay.
The private property.
Wait a minute, the sidewalks are in the private property?
Yes, yes, there's a, there's an easement along there, yeah, half that sidewalk along Lincoln there, in front of Bake Lab, is, is on the, or maybe even more than half. But, yeah, part of that sidewalk is actually on private property.
So, so that then becomes a really good example of how this, how we want this thing to work, and the question is, how do we accomplish that? Because it's sort of a public-private partnership issue of how you get the kind of relationship to the street that you want.
Additional question? I, informational for me, I guess. I assume this area is all subject to visibility triangles thing?
Yes.
Right? Engineer, has engineering looked at this to see if getting rid of some of these setbacks are okay?
Yes, it's been a long time since I talked to them, but I, I ran through the proposal months, months ago, yeah.
But, but the, the visibility set, right, I know, but, so that's...
What was it?
From the curb, or, or is that the property line?
Also, so that's, that's another thing, so if, if somebody wanted to build a building at the 10-foot setback, and it was within the visibility triangle as dictated by our Public Works folks, they could not build the building there, so we don't need to worry about that in setting these regulations. We just have to make sure we catch it when we do the review, which we will.
So, the 15, I'm, I'm trying to remember, the 15-foot setback is from the property line or from the curb?
Property line.
Regardless of the width of the, of the...
Right-of-way.
Public right-of-way that's not street.
Correct, so, you know, so...
Interesting, because I don't maintain it that way, I maintain it the other way.
Yeah, I mean, you know, in the future, in the future, if stuff got built up here, and we wanted to put in really wide sidewalks, because there's a lot of pedestrian traffic, and there's some first-floor restaurants and things, then we can do that in the public right-of-way. It's, it's, yeah, the sidewalks, like I stated in my presentation, that's not something we deal with here, but we still want to add it to the intent, so that in the future, people know, hey, we should put some wide sidewalks in the right-of-way.
Yeah. Could I make a point of clarification about Gregory Place, since I have access to the internet? So, Gregory Street stops at Oregon Street. It does not go through to Nevada Street. It may used to have gone through, but it is now, it's a parcel line there, there's no right-of-way there. So, that parking is on private property. So, I think technically that would not be considered a front yard. That would be a side yard.
Thank you, Marcus.
Now, could, could they build that in this district under these regulations?
I, I mean, I'd say probably, but they'd need, you know, they'd need to get a whole block, and then they could do the same thing down the middle of the block, you know, down the center. I'm not saying they would have to acquire a street, I'm just saying they would, you know, take any of these blocks that already have an alley down the center. I think conceivably, you could do something like that.
But then the main entrances would be in the middle of a block and not on the facing streets, so they'd have to do it on a street.
There are entrances to what used to be Mary Ann's and Co-Fusion, there are entrances off of Oregon Street to those businesses.
Yeah, but, but most of the entrances are on Gregory Place.
There isn't anything prohibits businesses, entrances on the side.
It was a street, it was not an alley, so, anyway, okay. Good, I mean, useful information.
But why do I feel after the discussion, it's still very undecided, that so many details seems to be not clear what is the best way?
Well, are we at the point where we're, someone could kind of clean this up and make a motion that we could then use as a jumping-off point to try and figure out where we're at?
I'm just going to be sure I'm clear, so it seems like there are, the, the, the two thoughts are, one, keep seeing that the proposed motion, as-is, is generous, makes improvements, whatever, or it seems like the other approach would be to get rid of all of the descriptive caveats, right? So, like, to change the classification, but then to get rid of anything that could be possibly current or in the future from, you know, sidewalk, you know, just all of the nuances, to get rid of all of that, and just, you know, leave it to the developer's discretion to have at it. So, those are, and those are the two, I don't know if there's a middle ground, but that's what it feels like.
Well, there absolutely is a middle ground, there can be, so, no, I mean, this is why I'm asking if we're at the point where someone thinks they can make a motion, so then we can figure out exactly what's on the table, because, yeah, we've heard, you know, some points being made that we should scrap everything, some, you know, point-by-point discussion of the items in section 5.7.
But even the point by, yeah, even the point-by-point discussion has been to identify the flaw in it, and to, you know, if we're going to do a fitness test to say, oh, this, you know, so, the point-by-point wasn't, wasn't a value to it, it was like, what's the point of having, you know, so...
Yeah, does someone feel like they can...
I've got one, one more question.
Sure.
About a detail. Footnote five on page 15, about bicycle parking requirements.
Yes.
I'm not entirely certain what it means.
Yeah, it, it took me a while to try and figure out how to write that one, so if you have recommendations for it. So, essentially, what it boils down to this is, our bicycle parking requirements currently are based on the amount of required car parking you have. It's not an ideal situation, that's what we have. So, the only way to require bike parking in this new CMU district, where we're getting rid of parking requirements for some types of buildings, we can't, we can't tie bike parking to required automobile parking if we're not requiring automobile parking for, for any non, for non-residential uses. So that footnote was my attempt to say, in this district, we don't require any automobile parking, so you should just calculate it as if, let's see, you know, you, you should calculate the amount of parking that would normally be required, and then base your bicycle parking off of that. It's very not fun to do, but yeah.
What you are trying to say is that for residential uses in CMU, one for every dwelling unit, regardless of project size?
Correct.
Okay, that's above, and that's, for all other uses...
Yes.
Look in the table for what parking would be required in any other district, because it's not the same in all districts, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, generally, it's a blanket for all districts. The only areas where we, the only, the only places where there are different parking requirements are specifically called out in other paragraphs, like in the campus commercial district, there are some, some additional things, in the R7, there's some additional things, but it's, just look at the basic table for auto parking.
By use.
Yeah, by use, and then...
That's what to say.
Yeah.
Look at the parking table by use to compute bicycle parking required. Now, whether that's the right logic, I'm not sure, but at least I now know what that footnote says.
I just want to make a, sort of a point of clarification for the board and staff, is when, when I, when I made a comment about the section 5.7, I didn't necessarily mean I thought the whole thing should be scrapped. I mean, part of this is, is, is I come from this from, from my profession, and I want the most freedom I can have in my profession. I understand that staff and the city need to protect the city, so some of these things, they may feel are appropriate, and I didn't want us, I didn't want to, to come off like I think all of them should be disregarded, because I don't think that's necessarily true. If these are things that are important to staff, to keep in here, I want them to keep them in, and the design professionals are just forced to work around them, and, and that's just part of what our job is. So, I don't want to imply that I think all these things should just be scrapped to make my job easier, because I don't think that's appropriate. I think, I want my job to be as free as it can be, but I also want the city to, to impose the restrictions that they feel are appropriate to be imposed anywhere they want to impose them, right? And I'll just voice my opinion on that.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying. I, I think that's how I understood that, and, yeah, I think that's what we have to weigh, is, you know, you, you know, taking your input as a design professional and, and... input as a design professional and being able to understand how these will impact the work that the designers do versus what the city is trying to achieve in terms of, you know, the benefit for the larger community, so. I think we wait— go ahead, Mr. Phil, or Mr. Hopkins.
I think some of these—we don't have design guidelines for this district, and we don't have design guidelines that are universal for the city. And I'm generally not in favor of design guidelines, frankly. But some of these, it seems to me, are more aspirational than requirements. For example, when parking is provided, access to parking must be off an alley when available. Now, all of these blocks currently appear to have alleys in various— well, no, they don't all have alleys.
Yeah, there's a couple strange ones, so—
There's some that are— have messed up alleys pretty clearly. My guess is with right-of-way no longer actually controlled by the city—
Yeah, in just a couple of instances, but for the most part—for the most part, they're intact, but I don't want to write a regulation that was going to be impossible in just a couple of instances, so.
Well, so—but you're saying must be off an alley when available?
Yes.
And my reaction is, well, that's not always the best way to do it. And alleys are their own problem. So, if you maintain all these alleys, the city is responsible for the alleys as well as the streets. And if all the parking is off the alleys and all of the mechanicals and waste distribution stuff off the alleys, then the alleys have to be big enough for garbage trucks, and they actually have to be big enough and have the space for the garbage trucks to actually turn so they can pick up the containers. In any case, it's not clear to me that this should be a must.
Well, so—that piece, as well as essentially every other additional regulation here, I just want to be clear that it's not really necessarily about design. It's about making the district pedestrian-friendly. So, you know, having a bunch of driveways on the street where people are walking on the sidewalk is just not pedestrian-friendly. Having blank walls is not pedestrian-friendly, so that's why the 20% transparency requirement is in there. So, I just—I just want to sort of get back to that, refocus on that piece as well. And I mean, the alleys are mostly intact and they mostly function currently. I mean, I don't think any of these— there's no trash pickup out front of any of the apartment buildings that I know of.
Well, if we change the language to be something like, you know, encouraged to be off an alley, like, what—
As a planner who has to deal with this, I do not like that suggestion. It's just when, you know, that's actually, speaking of design guidelines, and there's a reason we didn't—we didn't want to impose design guidelines here, even though the comprehensive plan—that's one of the couple of nuances I brought up earlier but didn't actually mention what they were. The comprehensive plan says, "Design guidelines shall be used to make these areas more pedestrian-friendly." You know, that—that's more maybe aspirational or more overkill or something. But the design guidelines that we do have, they work pretty well, but it's always a struggle, because they use words like "may" and like "shall" and "should" and "encourage", and that's really, really difficult to—to parse out, because it means something different to everybody.
Question. Does— sort of future questions. Does "must park off an alley" mean we have to have the proper back-out space in our alley?
You mean, just to have the—
Can our parking space be 18'6" in from the edge property line of the alley? Or do we need— does our alley need to be 20— do we need 23 feet to back out, or can we back out on our 12-foot alley?
I mean, you should be able to back out on the 12-foot alley, but I can find out what our—
But your garbage truck might not be able to—
No reason not to be able to back out.
Yeah.
So, if you're actually saving yourself, you're taking advantage of—
Saving a lot of space.
Oh.
You're taking advantage of the already-built right-of-way to be your turnaround space.
The alley is our driveway.
Right, I get it. But having on some properties with alleys, it doesn't really quite work that way. In fact—
It depends on paper.
All right, so we are at the—are we at the point where someone wants to make a motion so we can try and figure out where we are with some of these points? Okay, sure.
I think in the spirit of—
Excuse me, Mr. Chow, can you come up to a microphone and speak?
So, just add one minor point here. In the spirit of making the district pedestrian-friendly, I do think we could add—I won't say an exception, but it might be more clearly laid out, which is to allow pergola or outdoor seating within these districts that act as an open transitional space so that the building not doesn't intimidate the pedestrians, but that allow by right to be available. One of the challenges that we have at B3 zoning, which when Bake Lab was building the pergola or the outdoor seating, basically, we are not allowed to do it. It took us almost a year to make it happen. And because we have it here, we actually have more pedestrians that show up. So, I would say it's a minor point. We don't know what the setback— because of the setback regulation, essentially, that we're not allowed to do it. And then, once we start a journey, we find out it's actually very important to—to make exceptions or to make a rules or clearly state that it is allowed for open and transitional space to be used for outdoor seating purpose.
So, actually, I think this gets right to the—to the detail of the issue. This would be a reason, for example, not to require that the yard be landscaped or that 30% of it be something other than grass, because what you want in this case is to be able to pave it. Or hard-surface it somehow so it can be used for seating, and you want to be able to build shade, which is what the pergola is about—
Right.
—which you could not do in the setback under this regulation. And thank you, because what you've done for me is create an example of what we would like to see and what we're preventing.
Yeah, and I think in a lot of these cases, it is where the hard part is, is that, you know, based on the ground and the experience that we encounter. And to have an open transitional space, I think that's what everyone wants, to make it pedestrian-friendly. And so, I do think to be flexible in our policy and not over-regulated would become the key to allow it to organically happen.
So, a suggestion for D, for V7-D. I'm trying to come up with the words exactly, which I can't do, so I'm going to approximate. Front yards must be landscaped to support pedestrian-friendly access. Pardon? Okay, because as a— as a once-landscape architect, that includes hardscape, but I agree with you, the connotation is wrong. So, should be designed to enhance pedestrian—
Experience?
Experience and access, because we want—the—we want the front face in this—you know, the corner lot problem is another whole problem—to not only be a point of access, but we want it to be useful. That's my problem with the 10 to 20. It creates something that's almost inherently not useful. So, if we have a 10 to 20 with D7—the V7-D as edited by my two colleagues here, I think it—I think it accomplishes a couple of useful purposes.
Do we bump up against restrictions elsewhere in the zoning ordinance about how front yards can be used?
I mean, the only— so, the one that Mr. Chow had to deal with was that you can't have a structure in a required front yard. So, in this—the way everything here is written is that you couldn't have anything within that first 10 feet, because that's the minimum required front yard that you have, right? So—
So, can we define the 10-foot setback in a way that it's not defined as a front yard? Which goes back to when Andrew was saying— Wait, what?
Conditioned building space.
I mean, it's—I feel like we got to—we have to fit it into the table that it's in. I mean, I guess we don't have to, but I like having things in their location, so.
Kevin?
Yes.
Article 6 is the development regulations—
Right.
—section with the yard subsection in, and that's where the pergola ran in to the conflict. So, could that yard prohibition be modified to add the word pergola or outdoor seating structure? Would it still meet the public notice requirements?
Right. Yes, it could be, just trying to—
Unless there's a better way.
Just trying to think of unintended consequences.
But that would be specific to CMU.
Yeah, are we talking about a change that applies to the zoning ordinance in general, or—
I don't know.
Well, you could have the section say, "And in the CMU district—
Okay.
—outdoor seating structures," or "before," or wherever else, but in this case, you'd want to limit it to the CMU.
Within the notice requirements, we should restrict it to CMU.
Yes.
Yeah.
We may want to do in this, you know, wonderful future utopia of a revised zoning ordinance is apply it to other—
Yeah, so, in the spirit of keeping everything contained in this nice Section 5-7, I'm wondering if we can make some changes to the— just that 5.7-D. And if that—you know, if we said something like, for—you know, for buildings with residential use on the first floor and then the rest of it that's already there, right? And then for, you know, for all other uses, we could say, you know, then we could say something about what kind of landscaping we could allow, and we might be able to throw in something like, you know, landscaped structures such as pergolas are also allowed in that front area. I don't know, that seems kind of messy, but—
I think you're getting too specific.
Yeah.
That's why the language we came up with before is— describes the intent of what's to be accomplished.
Well, I think what—I think what he's worried about, the concern would be, is that if we just say—the language that we came up with, "Designed to enhance pedestrian, you know, experience and access," or whatever, so then someone develops and they just put in, you know, turf grass in their 10-foot setback. And then, you know, someone develops the building next to it and they put in, you know, hardscaping and a pergola or something like that, it's going to be a lot of variation. So, is there some minimum? Well, I don't know. That's the question, I think. That's the—
Yeah, okay.
Well, we've heard from others, you know, do we want some kind of minimum standards to achieve something versus leaving it all up to developers that, in some cases, can do interesting things and in other cases, might do nothing?
So, I know this one's trying to make about this area more similar to the Champaign, that campus area. How is this zoning ordinance standing now different from that one? In detail? For example, right now, we stand at 112 foot high. That one is 75. Another is—that one has maximum yard space of 20 foot. We have a maximum and minimal. What else? What other differences are there?
I would have to pull that up, and I can pull that up if we want to—
Well, I also don't think it's just that we want to make it like Champaign.
Correct.
I think what you included in the memo were, you know, examples that come from a text, the Walkability book, right, that provide kind of best practices for how people who do this and think about this say that this is how you achieve it. So, I think that's—that's what I understood, is you took those best practices and translated them into some development standard.
Right, yeah. Yeah, we did do that, and we tried to learn from Champaign, because Champaign's rules have been on the books since, I think, 2015 or 2017 or something. So, we did do things like, you know, say, 20% transparent glass instead of the 30% or 40%, which we knew was problematic. So, we had the benefit of, you know, doing these changes after they did theirs. So, it's a composite of looking at Champaign's regulations, looking at other regulations, looking at texts like Walkable City Rules, and then coming up with—with this version that's in front of you. And I'd say, you know, to Mr. Chow's point, he had a specific issue with, you know, with his pergola and, you know, when—and that's why we have a variance process, to be frank, is that when you have sort of a specific thing that comes up that is kind of unique to your situation, which that certainly was, you know, we have a process for that. So, I don't—I don't want to—you know, I wouldn't want us to bog down this process just trying to, you know, write in specific things to address that one particular issue. I do think that this piece about landscaping could be adjusted by sort of differentiating between first-floor residential versus first-floor anything else, because we do want to, you know, promote, you know, some—if you want—if you have a restaurant on the first floor, you want to be able to have a good seating area there. As it's written right now, you would have to—if you had a seating area, you would have to have— 30% of that area would have to have vegetation on it. I mean, it's not saying that you'd have to have the entire thing sort of covered with greenery, but that might be too much for commercial use, so. I mean, we could just say, for residential uses, front yards must be landscaped with a minimum of 30%, and then just leave commercial and other uses to the dictates of the designer.
Yeah, I mean, that might be— because otherwise, you're faced with trying to come up with every example. I mean, it might be a cafe, it might be, you know, an office space that wants, you know, outdoor area for people to hang out that looks like that, too, so.
But do we really need the 30% vegetation that is not turf?
I would, I just wrote that because I think walking by somewhere that's 100% turf just looks bad when I'm walking by. And I think a lot of people probably would agree. And I'm from the suburbs of Chicago.
The maintenance issue is significant, however.
Pardon?
The maintenance issue is significant. When you want to hire somebody, hiring somebody to mow grass is easy. Hiring somebody to do almost anything else in a consistent way is a different hire.
I mean, I'm not married to that regulation and I, you know, just looking at what people develop around town, a lot of people do put in landscaping because it looks nice and they want to have good curb appeal.
Which is fine, but do we need to require it?
That's what I'm saying, yeah. You can throw that out if you like.
I think we should not be being that specific about vegetation. Don't think we have to go out and measure 30%. And it's an interesting question of 30% of what? Surface area, volume, height?
I'm a planner, not a landscape architect, Sarah.
Yeah, well, like I said, I used to be a landscape architect. Anyway, I, your solution of saying that front yards of first-floor residential must be landscaped and nothing-
Full stop, yeah.
Full stop.
Yeah.
And not saying anything about first-floor commercial or parking. That is, not saying anything about other first-floor uses, but keeping then the 10 to 20-foot setback allows a commercial use to hardscape their 10 feet. And they'd still have to go for a variance to create any shade unless they hardscaped and planted trees, which they could do in 20 feet. And maybe they could do even in 10 feet if they combined it with a right-of-way. Or as in the Bake Lab case, built sidewalk on private property to increase the distance from the street to the sidewalk, which is a good thing to do.
Okay, so I'm thinking about how we can try and move this process along. If we, if no one's ready to make a motion right now, seems like section 5-7 is the sticking point. Should we go item by item, A through G, and try and figure out or come to a consensus on each of those? And then hopefully we'll be at the point where we can make a motion? So item A, buildings must have a main entrance facing the street with walkway connecting the entrance to the public sidewalk. Are we okay with that, or do we see issues with that?
Well, I'm gonna say get rid of all of them.
Okay.
But, I mean, I'll speak to each point, I guess, because part of it is my job. Main entrance facing the street is an aesthetic thing. A walkway connecting the entrance to the public sidewalk is part of the building code. So you have to connect your entry to a building to the public way regardless. So it's, part of it is moot, but main entry facing the street is just a personal choice.
Yeah, do we need clarification about which street? So imagining, you know, a block-through development that Mr. Hopkins mentioned, is there a way to make it so that there's like a controlling street of the four? Or that, you know, something like that, or?
No, I mean, I think we'd need to get into a more of a nuanced sort of description of the district to do that. But it, I mean, the way it's written does not, if you read it carefully, it doesn't say it has to have a main entrance facing every street. It just says facing the street, so we could say facing a street.
Okay.
Must have one main entrance facing a street, or facing the street.
Okay, in a good mixed-use building like, what's the name for the whole building that the Bake Lab's in? I can't remember.
Gather.
Gather.
The Gather. Which is the main entrance?
The, yeah, I mean, I don't know.
Is it to the Bake Lab? Is it to the hotel? Is it the back entrance to the Bake Lab? Is it?
I mean, it's probably the Bake Lab one, because on the, on the corner at Lincoln and University, that's not really an entrance there even, I don't think.
Well, okay, so the main entrance in this case is the entrance only to one small, in the focus of the Gather, retail business. And that's the main entrance?
Sure.
I think that's crazy. If I build a residential building of six stories with three commercial retail on the first floor, the main entrance is not 1, 2, 3 entrances to the retail. It's the main entrance to six stories of residential. And that maybe doesn't belong on facing the street. I think this is an example of something that we imagine what this means in this sort of ideal notion of, like I said before, design that planners have decided this is it, we've got it all figured out, everybody should do it this way, and as long as they do, everything will be perfect. And then we succeed and discover that we've made a monster. And I think this is, you know, I think we should just get rid of this one.
If I can clarify for the Gather, the main auto-oriented entrance is off the parking lot when you come off of Clark Street, where cars park. The main pedestrian-oriented entrance is off of Lincoln Avenue. You walk in and to the right is the counter for Bake Lab, but when you go in, there's the registration table for the hotel and for the apartment complex. So there's a shared lobby there with seating for Bake Lab and the counter for Bake Lab, but that is the main pedestrian entrance to the Gather.
Okay, but you wouldn't necessarily want that for a residential apartment building.
Why not?
Because you want three separate retail things on the first floor.
But why, why wouldn't you want to have a residential access off of the street?
What I'm trying to say is, requiring the idea of a main entrance to a building that is a mixed-use building of six stories doesn't make sense as a requirement.
What if we get rid of main? What if we just say an entrance facing the street?
Well, then what if, what's the hurt of just class out this one?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get at. I just don't think it's necessary.
Well, because then you could have the example of the Gather where there are only entrances off the parking lot. And there are no entrances off of the street side, which is where pedestrians are walking on the sidewalk, which is, I think, what we don't want.
Well, you could say that there has to be a, this gets back to what we created as a substitution for D, which is pedestrian access. Pedestrian-friendly pedestrian access is part of what has to be in the front yard.
Yeah, so, well, buildings must have pedestrian access from the street.
Yeah.
I, I mean, you could say that, but then it could be a tiny sidewalk going into what's essentially just a single door with, you know, with nothing that says like, this is a welcoming space for pedestrians. I'd like to ask a question of Mr. Fell. If you were asked to design a building with one main entrance facing the street, you could probably do that, right? Okay, all right, that's all I need to know.
But should he?
I mean, the designers are going to be able to meet this, and the intent is to make, is to make things that are, you know, is to enhance the pedestrian environment here.
Yeah, I mean, personally, I get the intent to, you know, the intent is to avoid having something like the Gather where there is only an entrance or a main entrance off of the parking lot or something like that, right?
No, I mean, the Gather, the Gather with the entrance through Bake Lab is, is far and away better than pretty much every entrance I showed you in the district right now, so.
I mean, only having an entrance off the parking lot as opposed to having-
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, we do not want just, right, yeah.
So we're trying to, we're trying to differentiate between having access or the main access coming off of the parking lot behind the building versus the main access coming off of the street.
Right, yeah.
So still, I want to see if there's a way to write it in a guidance like promoting pedestrian traffic through, instead of writing a main entrance and a street. Is there a way to write it in a way clearly shows your intent, you want to encourage more pedestrian traffic through that main street? And then what? And then they go to the back of the building and go get their car if they want to?
Sure, if they have a car, yeah. I mean, I think if we just, if we said buildings must have one main pedestrian entrance facing a street, I think that kind of gets to the intent of it.
It doesn't preclude other entrances, it just says one entrance. I mean, yeah, it doesn't limit you doing other things, it's just saying that one of them.
Okay, are we good with A?
Yeah.
Modified.
Yes.
As I just stated.
Yes. Okay, B, building walls that face a street must have at least 20% transparent glass.
So the question is face a street or face every street? For the corner lots.
So I'll speak, the intent is that any, any street-facing wall for a building is going to have 20% transparent glass. And I think that's how it's written, but if it's, if it's not, I just want to be clear that that's the intent. So if we need to change it.
Because in A, we changed the at main entrance facing S Street. So if they are facing more than one street, they just need to do it for S Street. And then on B, face S Street must be at least 20% transparent glass. I just want to make sure when we use the at here, we are talking about the same thing.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, they're a little, they're slightly different. And this one, the way it's written would be, you know, the way I would interpret this as the zoning administrator is that any building wall that faces a street would have to meet this requirement.
I think I'm fine with that. Like, clearly, some, sometimes when you have a big building, that's just a brick wall, as you show, it's not desirable, so I don't see anything too wrong with that.
I'll say I don't see anything too wrong with it, but, but I see something wrong with it, which is it's still limiting to what a designer can do on a building. There are multiple buildings, famous buildings around the world with no windows facing the street.
Yeah, but I think we're not, we're not looking to make famous buildings. We're looking to create-
I agree, no, but-
A built environment that's-
But, but it's, to me, this is, this is an arbitrary requirement based on someone's aesthetic.
I've got two thoughts. One was the example of a lab. So you're preventing something that we want to be built from being built. The configuration of buildings that are either zero-lot line townhouses or apartments like the ones the north of us on the side street, it is unlikely to make sense to require windows. And some of us actually are interested in world-famous architecture.
There is still the variance process, where if somebody has justifications, they can plead their case.
I would like to, I'll say to clarify my point. It would be, as an architect, it would be extremely rare for us, I think, to design a building without 20% glass facing the street. But I want the opportunity to do so if I need to.
Well, you, you have all the rest of Urbana in which to design that building. There's just 28.
No, he doesn't, actually.
No? Why not?
I can't do it in East Urbana.
That's a very, that's a small, that's a small area.
Design guidelines, you can't do it, yeah, right. I couldn't build my house, I couldn't have my yard in some of these places. I think it's not only that it may be unusual, there are other ways to make interesting facades other than glass. And there are good reasons not to have glass on north-facing or west-facing walls from an energy point of view. There can be good design reasons not to put glass on a given wall, either for interior, energy-saving, sun-loading. This is just the kind of thing that somebody said, okay, I like this, everybody should like this, so we're going to make everybody do this.
I mean, I, I wrote this in there, and I wrote it in there because blank walls are not pleasant to walk by. Those brick walls are not pleasant to walk by, we're trying to make this pedestrian-friendly. So there's got to be some amount of something going on there that's not just a blank brick wall.
To me, this is, this is, this is a minimum of, you know, potential requirements that could address things like that. You could address materials, you could address articulation, you could address, I'm not the designer, so I don't want to overstep my vocabulary, but, so I have the opposite reaction. To me, this is, this is a minimum of something that tries to achieve, you know, a collective built environment that has a certain experience, not thinking about one-off, you know, buildings that might want to do something different and can apply for variance or something like that. But what is the collective impact on requirement, of a requirement like this on the larger neighborhood? And if most buildings have, you know, 20% transparency, it doesn't seem unreasonable that this is a starting point for me.
And to the point about energy efficiency, I had initially written this as 30% before we did our public meetings. And there was an architect at one of those meetings, and he said, that's really hard with current energy code to meet this requirement. It makes it a lot more expensive, because then you have to make other things more energy-efficient. So I did, you know, reel it back when faced with the reality of modern energy codes.
Okay, so it sounds like we might not have agreement about B, but maybe we can leave this up to a motion and deal with it at that point. So let's move on to C. The first story, every building must have a clear ceiling height of at least 12 feet. Mr. Fell?
Too ambiguous, way too ambiguous. What's our, what's the ceiling height in here? That's at 10 feet, the structure's probably four feet above that. What is it? What's our ceiling height? We need, we need a little more clarity, to me. We need, we need a little more clarity, to me. Again, it's arbitrary. If someone is doing a strictly residential building, they absolutely do not want to build a 12-foot first floor. They're gonna build a, I mean, the normal building is gonna be built with pre-cut wood studs that are nine feet tall. So it, to me, this is, this one is very similar to, to B. It's a kind of an arbitrary thing and in 95% of the cases, it may be appropriate. The 5%, it's not, we shouldn't have it.
Not appropriate in 95% of the cases if they're mostly residential.
I, yeah, I, that would be my opinion, yes. Most, most of these lots, I think, will be developed as residential lots in which a 12-foot first floor is not. I wouldn't say not appropriate, but absolutely not necessary and a cost that a developer does not want to take on.
Yeah, I'd agree. I think the market is that these are most likely to be residential. And if we're, we're adding something like this, it's just gonna add unnecessary cost, then. You know, I think that if we get to the point 20 years down the road where someone wants to do adaptive reuse and change one of these things, then they can figure it out at that point, but. We'll get rid of C. Everyone living with that? No?
It's okay.
No, no, let's.
This is consensus, so.
No.
Nope, we're absolutely good.
Where does the 12 feet come from?
I'll draw your attention to Exhibit E, which is pages from Walkable City Rules. Yeah, I was looking for a sort of a, a minimum ceiling height that would allow for, you know, good mixed use, so whatever use you want to put there, so not precluding, you know, not, not just saying, okay, this is a residential building that cannot be adaptively reused or put any commercial in there. So this is from that section in, from the book Walkable City Rules that is from seven rules for a successful downtown Tulsa. So this was a downtown district, so probably more business oriented. But they had a rule in there with a minimum ceiling height of 12 feet and that sounded reasonable enough.
So for me, when I'm thinking about what can be in this space, I really like the idea of 20 bedroom or less, smaller development without parking requirement, make it all residential. If we got a dozen of those really attractive ones, those are great. And if some developer is really ambitious, want to acquire quite a few pieces of lot, half block to do a mixed development. To the extent when they have that much land, they might be thinking about mixed development. They might already have the intention of building first floor 12 feet. But for a 20 bedroom or less building, it's really never, the first floor is going to be suitable for a commercial development.
Yeah, I think if we were to have something like this, we'd need more nuance and maybe it would need to apply to certain corridors within the neighborhood or something like that. But I also think, you know, we're as likely, as Chenxi said, to get, you know, smaller scale, single lot type redevelopments where having a requirement like this is just adding cost to already expensive.
Yeah, I won't lose sleep if y'all strike it.
Okay.
Okay, C striked.
Okay, D. Front yards must be landscaped with a minimum of 30% vegetation. I think we dealt with this one adequately enough, right?
So, yeah, just what I had written down in my notes. It was for buildings with first floor residential uses, front yards must be landscaped.
Yeah. I think that's where we left it. Okay, E. Parking is not allowed in front yards and must be located behind the principal face of a building. Parking areas shall not be visible from the street.
For me, clarification, I have actually another parking question. Can I ask that one first? Amount of parking required, it's only required for residential developments containing 20 bedrooms or more. Parking shall be provided at a rate of 0.2 spaces per bedroom. Okay, I'm gonna build a building with 24 bedrooms, how many parking spaces do I need? Do I need one?
No, you need 0.25 by 24.
For every 20, so the first 20 aren't free if I build 22, right?
No.
Okay. That, that should, that should be changed, in my opinion, because if, if I had a developer that wants to build, that has the space to build 24 bedrooms, but doesn't have the space to build that much parking, he's gonna, he's only gonna build 20 bedrooms, right? You're, you're limiting him, so I believe you give him the first 20 free if that's what you want to do.
That's definitely better for the reasons you're describing. Trying to think through whether there are any problems with that.
Right, there may be, I don't know, but I did, that's, I would suggest that change, so.
Why not just not require parking and let developers provide the parking that they need?
Anecdotally, in Champagne, that works pretty well. We've, we've only done the one building I mentioned with no parking. Any building of any size, they really want a few parking spaces because Amazon comes every day and Grubhub comes 50 times a day. So they need a place for those kind of things to happen. They have almost no tenants park in their spaces. It's, it's other things, but.
But why do we need to prescribe that? Why can't?
Because when they get full enough, because these, the buildings, when they're built, are gonna be built as big as they can and there won't be parking and then there's nowhere to do it. So that, so it's the Amazon truck is gonna park on Springfield Avenue to unload. Because that's his only option.
And move in and move out. They've gotta have off-street space.
If, if there's no parking, a developer will do what he wants. In my experience, it's rare that they're gonna put no parking in. They, they want something to happen and it is lots for move in and just deliveries and things like that.
That's my point, why not, I mean, why, why not give them the flexibility to put in what they want?
No.
Because some of them won't. Free ride on their neighbors, that's what people get worried about. That's why parking is such a big political issue.
Okay, anyway, that's not part of E.
No, E, my question for E, it says parking shall not be visible from the street if we're parking off the alley. I can see that from the side street all day long, so what's our?
Yeah, that was sort of in there as a placeholder because the intent is, you know, we don't want parking to, to be super visible. But I, I couldn't think of anything better, frankly, than to say that. Because, yeah, parking shall not be visible from the street except across an alley.
Right. Well, okay, the, because I run into these problems, parking cannot be visible from the street. That has meant to me at times when I'm standing on Springfield Avenue and the parking is behind my building and it can be seen, the planner in a different city said he could see that from the street.
How could he see it?
Because, because it's beside the building and off the alley.
Oh, like that, yeah.
So, so to, as a design professional, I would appreciate a little more clarification on, on screening the parking or, or what the intent is. I, I know the intent, I just need a little better language.
Got any ideas?
No.
I mean, we could delete the last sentence in E.
Yeah, I mean, if it's not in the front yard and it's located behind the building.
I don't necess, I don't necessarily agree that, that it should be eliminated because, again, we, we, it's, I think it's our responsibility to, to prepare for someone that's gonna aggregate a lot of land and build a parking lot. And that parking lot might butt 60 feet on Lincoln Avenue and we don't want that necessarily to be seen. So that should be screened, but, but someone who has three parking spaces off the alley that abut, I don't know, Main Street halfway down, that guy shouldn't have to screen his, his space. So I, how do we make that distinction? That's my planner's job.
Yeah, there's probably a way to, to sort of refer to our, our current parking screening requirements because I can think of, you know, like, like for example, you know, this one on your screen that's sort of at south, the lower left corner of Springfield and Gregory on here with that sort of white roof. It's got parking that is kind of right next to the sidewalk, so we wouldn't want to allow that. But, you know, if you got a building there with parking behind it.
I actually don't think that's anything wrong with it, it looks just fine. If, if I'm looking at the same one as you are looking.
If you're walking down this sidewalk here.
Yeah, I think I have a picture of it in the photos as well. But, yeah, the intent is that, okay, if you are gonna, okay, actually, that parking's in the front yard, so that wouldn't be allowed anyway. But, but, yeah, if you've got a, a building that sort of doesn't, you know, wrap around all the way to the alley, which most of them are not going to. I, I think, yeah, I could think of a way to do, to state that.
Kevin, when you say behind the principal face of the structure, do you mean the front face or the rear face?
I, I mean, the, the front face, any, any front face essentially, but that.
Any street facing.
I mean, I guess that would have to be behind.
The corner lots, so this is the question, is that actually legal? Or is it not behind the principal face, which includes both faces on a corner lot?
And then it doesn't have any parking spot, space for parking if according to the criteria E.
Well, it would have to be moved down and then a screen. Access from the alley.
I think we could, we could probably just say, you know, parking must be screened and, you know, with, or let me, let me pull up what our current requirements are.
Are they in the zoning ordinance or the land development?
Yeah, in the zoning ordinance.
Kevin, while you look that up, I would not make a recommendation, but ask, would ask, request staff to think about the issue of being able to dedicate parking on a separate lot in this district and eliminate that. You can, you can, in, in certain instances, if you don't have enough space on your lot, you can, you can secure parking on a, a separate lot within 500 feet, is that correct? Five, 600 feet of your lot dedicated to your building. So you theoretically could have a building and someone's parking space is 600 feet away. So, so that, that, as someone who deals with this, that's, that's a loophole that, that gets taken advantage of inappropriately at times. I, I would suggest the city get rid of that. At least in this district, because you just cut the parking way down, right?
Right, yeah, and the, so, yeah, by reducing the parking by a lot, that would probably, in effect, eliminate that practice. But, yeah, point, point taken.
Okay, while you're searching for that, we'll move on to F, because we're coming up on three hours here. So when parking is provided, access to parking must be off an alley when available. I think we talked about this one as well.
I think I'm fine with that.
Anyone else have any major issues with this?
I'd be in favor of getting rid of it because in, in general terms and best practices, an efficient building is gonna park off the alley anyway. Forcing that to happen just as a regulation, it may not be appropriate all the time. It, in, in a residential use with this amount of parking required, it's going to happen almost every time. So I think that, I think requiring it is nearly redundant.
Well, the flip side of that would be that, then it's not gonna cause problems in most cases to have that requirement. Right? I mean.
But, but it's also being forced in a, in a case where it may not, just in terms of, to some future building design, may not want that. May not, you know?
It says when available, so I don't.
Also, there's, you know, there's a variance process for, for individual cases where that might, that might make sense.
I think though, as Ms. Simms said, the when available phrase makes, it's almost an invitation to a variance if you need one. That, that's, that makes a difference.
I think the.
I agree with you in principle, but.
I think the intent of, you know, minimizing curb cuts and crossing sidewalks is worthwhile, so I think we should push in that direction and then there's an out when it doesn't work. Okay, G. Oh, did you have something? Okay. Mechanical equipment and trash enclosures, trash enclosures must be screened from view at ground level from public rights of way, including alleys. No mechanical equipment or trash enclosure, enclosures are allowed in front yards.
I'm gonna say I'm okay with that unless someone feels really strong about it. I say I'm okay with it as how it is written unless someone provide a very strong rationality against this point.
So including alleys bothers me a little bit. It means everything has to be screened on four sides.
Yeah.
Including the access to remove it.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you, they would have to have a door.
From the alley for everything? So every garbage truck that comes in has to get out, open that door and be able to get access and turn to pick that thing up through a narrow opening because it's been built to be screened and has to get the angle. Uh-uh.
That's how it's written.
Yeah, that's not, that's not how the world works.
Yeah, you could change it.
Just delete alleys, including alleys.
But they are public rights of ways, so should we say excluding alleys? Flip it out of Ted.
So excluding alleys, well, yeah, and, and alleys are, yeah, you're right, it's gotta be excluding alleys.
Okay. Can I, this might be a little, a little wordy, but I, I may have a solution for the parking screening.
Okay.
So if we said, you know, it's not, parking is not allowed in front yards and must be located behind the principal face of a building, then we cross out the next part and we say, let's see, screening shall be provided around the entire perimeter of the parking area except along the portion at the parking area abutting a public alley.
There's gotta be an entrance.
Right, yeah, the, except, except along the portion abutting a public alley.
Has to be from the alley.
Yeah.
If we're gonna keep the alley requirement, I guess.
But parking is not always ugly. We, what's wrong of seeing some cars?
I happen to agree with you, but I think we're outliers in the world.
We require only, only beautiful cars to be parked in visible spots.
Come on, where you drive, I wanna see.
Yeah, I want to see your car.
Like your VW van.
Yeah, I just do not like idea of so much, like, like we have to hide our cars. If you already says it should be in the back of your building, why do you still need to add sentence that you have to build fences to hide your cars?
Well, it doesn't say fences. We, screening is typically like landscaping for parking areas, or can be landscaping for parking areas. But it's, but it's, it's because, you know, those side streets that go along the alleys are still streets that people walk down. So it's kind of, you know, give them something pleasant to look at as well.
I don't mind looking at the cars, better than fence, definitely.
Yeah, but I think we're not, the point is, we're not trying to apply our own individual aesthetic taste. We're trying to apply best practices for how to create pleasant pedestrian environments. And this, these are what people who study this and. And this, these are what people who study this and work on this issue have come up with, so...
I do not always agree, though.
Okay, well, it sounds like there's maybe more support for that one than, than...
Which one are we talking about? Is it E, the proposed change?
Yeah, the E one. Parking, the screening, the screening requirements.
We want to make sure, Kevin, can you read your recommendation for E again?
Okay. So it would say, reading the whole thing, so parking is not allowed in front yards and must be located behind the principal face of a building. Parking shall be screened around the entire perimeter of the parking area except along the portion abutting a public alley.
So is this modification makes it more difficult or makes it easy than the current version where it says parking access should not be visible from the street?
I think it makes it easier to meet, because you can provide some screening, but it doesn't say it has to be completely screened, so you would just have to, you know, provide a, a screening of some sort, but you would still see...
You're breaking it up.
Yeah, you would still see some of the parking, because it's, to Andrew's point, it's impossible to screen the parking completely unless you walled off the alley as well, right?
Put it on three sides already?
Yeah, does your, does your recommendation mean we're, if you park off the alley, you're screening it on three sides?
No, no.
The two short sides?
You'd be screening it, so if you're parking off the alley, and this, this would really just be for, for, probably just apply to corner lots, really. Yeah.
Your statement doesn't make sense, because you said all sides except that facing the alley.
Uh, no, wait. So parking shall be screened around the entire, around the entire perimeter of the parking area. I guess perimeter might be kinda... Maybe, maybe it could work where it's meant that.
Except for the alley.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, along, around the entire perimeter, except along the portion abutting a public alley.
How about, how about we go back to the original statement and say parking areas shall be screened to minimize visibility from the street, something like that?
Yeah, that, I think that works.
To minimize visibility from the street, a design guideline. Anyway, it's better than what we got.
Okay. So we've gone A through G. Is anyone ready to make a motion?
I do want to bring it up, Andrew's question, if someone wants to build a 22 versus 20, or they require 11 parking or one parking. I think it's a very important spot we need to clarify.
Agree, and I think also we need to clarify delivery vehicle, service vehicle access. I think that's gotta be a requirement somehow. Exactly how that happens, but...
Oh, just to allow spaces for delivery vehicles? Or, or what?
Well... I'm not sure, but if we eliminate all the parking requirements... And there's also goes back, goes back to the notion of on-street parking, which is implied in the intent statement. Whether there's on-street parking is up to the city, not to anyone else. So for the moment, we can ignore that intent statement, because it doesn't affect the text amendment we're actually adopting. I think it should be taken out of the intent statement myself. And maybe taking it out of the intent statement is one way to increase the plausibility of FedEx, Amazon, stopping in the parking lane, in the stopping lane if there's no parking, depending on the street with requirements. But, I, I mean, we have to acknowledge that even if there's 20 beds, that at some point, and in this community, in this location, likely all in the same week, people are gonna move in and out of those apartments. That's 20 cars that have to be somewhere. If there's on-street parking in this location, it's either gonna be paid, metered, which it isn't at the moment.
It is not metered at the moment. There are no parking permits in this area either. It's all free. No, there's on-street parking in most of this area. It's really well-used, because it's so close to the university.
Right, well, that's what I was gonna say. On-street parking here, on-street parking here is not going to be available for FedEx or residents, because it's already well-used by people who don't live here.
Well, so, so that's beyond the scope of the text amendment, but there are certainly ways that we could manage the on-street, on-street parking. But I don't wanna get into that now or promise anything in the future, but we could certainly do that. You could have, you know, loading zones or delivery vehicles-only zones right in front of a place, but that's, again, that's beyond the scope of this.
But it helps decide whether we need to put something in this about parking. So that may be a better solution. Granted, we can't adopt it.
Right.
Okay. I would say either we're ready to make a motion, or we should think about continuing this meeting, because we were at the three-hour point.
I think we are very, very close, and after Lou's discussion about parking, that we know even when those buildings are not built with a lot of parking, the delivery vehicle will not be a problem, because later on, we can solve the issue by allowing certain loading zone on those currently on-street parking spots. So the question, my last question really comes down to if you have a 22-bedroom apartment, exactly how many parking spaces required? Is it one or 11? I just need to know that, and then I think I will be ready to make a motion. I will go with one.
Sorry, I'm, I was reading through the bylaws and missed that part of the conversation. Was that the, the parking above 20 spaces? Okay, so having, uh...
First 20 are free.
First 20 are free? Okay.
You don't have to word it that way, but...
You can word it later, but that's...
All right, the intent.
Okay, I, I can, I can word that later.
Okay, so I think we have resolved all the issues that I'm aware of. Anyone ready to make a motion?
And we are okay with reduce it down to 75 as height. Is that a motion? Is that part of a motion? And we are okay with 10 to 20 front yard, given that how we reduce the length, 5D, how we modify 5D. 570.
Right.
Right.
Okay, I think I'm okay.
Okay, you ready to make a motion?
Uh, no.
Ms. Fell?
I'm gonna make probably a different motion, and I'm not sure how to do this, but I move that we ask staff to update Plan Case 2485-T-24 and re-present it, so we can hear what these changes are and read them. I want to continue the case, so you can update the document and we can see what the changes are. And because I think we've done a, some of our strokes are a little too broad here to, to approve this as what we've discussed. And, and one of the things I'll go back to, I wanna know what you're gonna do with, uh, remote parking, right? And I, that's not with, with being able to dedicate parking on another site, right? I wanna know the answer, and I don't want you to have to answer that right now.
Well, sure.
I want you to be able to think about it.
I mean, but that, I don't wanna hold up the, the process by, I mean, that, that we can address later. And that, I think, is beyond, I don't know if we'd have to re-notice for this case to address that issue or not.
Okay, well, that...
I don't really wanna... I mean, yes, that's, that's a good point. It's something I had thought about before. I think with changes to the parking that we're talking about, it'll probably kinda be a moot point for, for most things. But yeah, I don't like that regulation. It'd be nice to...
Regardless of that regulation, I personally would be more comfortable if staff updated the document and we could see it before we voted on it. That's just my personal opinion.
Okay, so we essentially have a motion to continue the case to the next meeting. Is that...
Second.
Do we have second? Ms. Yu? Is there any discussion on the motion? Ms. Hopkins?
We would be continuing this to the July 18th meeting, am I correct?
Correct, one week from today, yes. Which... I guess I got some work to do in the morning, so I can send out the packet. That's okay. Because just timing-wise, the, just because the July 4th holiday and how the City Council and Committee of the Hall worked, this case, whether it's forwarded to council tonight or on the 18th, would be going to the Committee of the Hall on August 5th. So continuing it a week doesn't affect anything.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion? Ready to vote? Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Is that your vote, Marcus?
Pardon?
Sorry.
Yes, you may have a roll call. Mr. Alred?
Yes.
Mr. Andreessen?
Yes.
Mr. Fell? Mr. Hopkins? Ms. McFarland? Mr. Rose? Ms. Sims? Ms. Yu?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes, so this case has been continued to the July 18th meeting to give staff a chance to update their proposal and re-present a brief summary of the changes.
Excellent, sounds good. You'll get that tomorrow.
I hope you have quorum. I can't be here.
Well, we'll deal with that.
You can't be here, either. Two of us that can't be here.
Maybe that would be a good idea to take a straw poll of who is able to come from this group.
Well, we have, we just know what it is now. There's four of us, so we need one more of the two.
He's out of the country.
If, if it's on business, you could zoom yourself in, but if you're on vacation, you can't do that.
You might be able to zoom in.
Is that still allowed? I thought it wasn't allowed anymore.
If you're, by the bylaws, if you're on a business trip, you're allowed to zoom in, yes?
Correct, but you cannot be counted towards quorum.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm working in Indianapolis.
But it doesn't help us with it, okay?
Okay, well, we've already voted on that motion.
Yeah, that's correct.
The ship, the ship has sailed, to, so to speak. Okay, new business, there's no new business. Audience participation, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the Plan Commission for five minutes uninterrupted on topic of your choice? If so, please come forward and sign in. You're good, all right. Staff report, do we have a staff report?
We do. I have two exciting bits of news, one substantially more exciting than the first, so I'm gonna do the first, less exciting one first. Sorry, it's been a long, it's been a long night. So the rezoning case for that property up on Cunningham Avenue was passed by City Council. Not a huge surprise there. The other exciting bit of news, and I've misplaced my notes, but I've got the timeline in front of me. So, comprehensive plan, so we have been working for a little while and diligently on producing a draft that we feel is ready to be sent to you all for review. So, timing-wise, this coming Monday at the Committee of the Hall, we're gonna give an update to council, sort of explain in where we are in the process and the process moving forward. The following day, you all will be given reviewing and commenting access and instructions for the draft plan software online. So you will have about a month to review this first draft, and then we would ask for your comments back by August 13th, so that we can prepare for our study session that you should have received an email about that will take place on August 22nd. So, exciting news.
All right, good to hear.
A question, the form in which we're going to get this?
Yes. So it's, um...
I'm, I'm trying to imagine how to be able to respond in a deliberative manner as opposed to a editing manner, or what we're actually gonna get and how we can respond to it.
Yeah, so I guess the best way I could describe this software is like, it's like a better, much better, more collaborative version of like, you know, Microsoft Word tracking changes and such. I think for this first iteration, we'll probably just ask you to, so it's online, and you'll just read through the text, and then you can add comments throughout the document where you see fit, and then those all get collected. To comply with Open Meetings Act, you all will not be able to see each other's comments. You'll only be able to see the comments that you made. Staff will get all of the comments, so that we can, you know, prepare for the study session. Now, if you're somebody like me, I usually prefer to have a hard copy of something. If you want a hard copy, I'd be happy to print one of those for you, but then I'd ask that you also then, if you make comments on a hard copy, then to take those and enter them into the online software, because that's just gonna, we, you know, one reason that we're, we're using this software is because we want everything to be contained in there. And then when it goes out for public comment, you know, all of the public comments will be in, in one space as well, so it should make the process of getting and then responding to comments a lot easier.
But non-deliberative. Okay, I, I understand, this is the way some people think we should do things now, but it has problems.
I mean, there will be opportunity to deliberate once we bring this to, you know, once we open it as a public hearing, which...
The study session, we can deliberate.
Yeah, yes, yes, sorry. Yeah, study session, yeah.
Public hearing is, is all another...
Right, yeah.
But the study session is also a public meeting.
Yes. And there will be deliberation abound.
Yes.
Okay, sounds good. So those instructions will be sent to us as well?
They will.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll send the timeline as well, so you all know, you know, the dates that we're talking about going forward.
So dates, August 15th, you want comments?
Uh, August 13th, if you could get me comments by...
August 22nd?
22nd study session.
Timeline beyond that?
The timeline beyond that would be, yeah, there would be, there would be a public hearing. We're scheduling that, so that would be the official, like, case and everything, would be the 5th of September.
Completely unrealistic, I think.
Well, I mean, we'll see. We've gotta have a timeline set out right now, so...
Agreed. That allows only one study session. That, that allows only one study session. That's two weeks over Labor Day weekend between a study session and a public hearing. We've never discussed this in public before. None of it. This is inconceivable to me. Anyway, okay.
Well, I assume we can talk about that on the 22nd as well?
Yes, we can.
But I guess part of my point is, because we're not going to have any deliberative interaction until the 22nd, the idea that we would be ready for a public hearing by the 5th, two weeks later, and look what we went through tonight on one zoning text amendment, talking about a comp plan. I'm a bit really aware that I actually am liking to... This is completely unrealistic timescale.
Just like each study section to address one chapter of the comp plan is pretty remarkable by itself.
Right, I, I think we're going to need, we both need, I, well, I don't know, because I haven't seen any of this, so I have no idea how it's structured. I don't know how it relates to all the other adopted plans that are adopted as amendments to the comp plan.
So at Monday's council, at Monday's council meeting, we'll be going through the table of contents, what's involved in the plan, and then...
That should not go to the council before it's going to the Plan Commission.
Yeah, there's, there's no content, it's just an outline of, of the process.
Why haven't we gotten it? We've heard nothing about this since last fall. And if, if I'm getting angry, I am angry. I've been angry for a long time.
All right. Okay. Well, we have no study session and no closed session, so we are adjourned.
Before we adjourn, I, I just want to say, staff, you did a great job preparing this document. I mean, it's, I want to thank you for the effort you put into it because you did a really good job, and I want to make sure I say that.
Yeah.
And I said that at the beginning, and I would reinforce what...
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I agree.
I really appreciate, because this is really what's needed in that area. I think you are doing a great job in taking on this task. Thank you.
Okay, now we are adjourned.